All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining tonight. This is the February fifteenth Louisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. And because of COVID-19, our meetings being held electronically and it's being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee can raise their hand by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Attendees calling in can dial star nine on their phone and a raised handle appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and the clerk of YouTube, please tell us your name, your address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you'd like to speak on another topic, you'll just need to raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. City Clerk mute. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzmann, here. Representative Maloney. Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Fagie.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Most.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the agenda? The non all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The agenda has been approved. That takes us to our public comments on items that are not on the agenda or items that only appear on our consent agenda. Any members of the public care to comment on an item that's not on our agenda or only appears on our consent agenda? First, we have Christian Dino.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
We can. Hi, Christian.
Hi. I wanted to discuss agenda item four F in regards to the Marshall Fire Legislative Agenda. I had a couple of concerns with this. You know, one is the area where you talk about identifying opportunities to secure affordable housing through the rebuilding process. Potential approaches could include land purchase, land banking of lots where homeowners do not plan to rebuild for affordable housing development with deed restricted affordability. You know, the other concern that I have is in on page eight of that section, the city supports enhancement enhancements to Colorado Urban Renewal Law that do not unreasonably restrict the use of tax increment financing or eminent domain for redevelopment projects. I guess I'd like to know what exactly the city is planning with with these phrasings in there. It sounds like you're planning on purchasing lots within neighborhoods and potentially even considering the use of eminent domain to secure additional lots beyond that. I am really concerned with with this being in in your legislative agenda with everything that's going on. I'm apologize, Christian Dino, nine six seven Eldorado Lane. You know, my my house was one of the ones lost. You know, my entire neighborhood was lost. And, you know, we're we're going through a lot and I guess I keep hearing the use of the word opportunity. And I'd like to express very adamantly, our tragedy is not your opportunity. So I think you really need to think about what you're doing and how you're moving forward with some of these plans because you know, the more I see stuff come out, it looks like you're redeveloping a master plan for Louisville. And our homes may not fit within that plan. So I'd like a little more transparency on what you're really looking at here. And sorry, Maxine, if I sound fragile.
Thank you, Christian. And I just want to let folks know I see a lot of hands and so we may pause public comment because we have one agenda topic that has a time block on it. But we'll come right back into public comment. I just want to let folks know that at six fifteen, we will put a pause in public comment and we'll just jump, like I say, right back into it. Congressman DeGussis coming to give us an update tonight and he has a specific time schedule he has to keep to. So I just want to let folks to know we'll get as far as we can. Pause at six fifteen, get an update, and then we'll come back. Next, we have Russell Moore.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. City Council, we're asking that you do everything in your power to assist those who suffered lost homes in the Marshall Fire to rebuild and remain in Louisville. Council has repeatedly stated that that objective is a top priority. After numerous and continued conversations with our neighborhood groups and their allies, let me offer some very simple paths forward that might bring most of us in alignment on rebuilding issues. For Marshall Fire victims only, allow them to plan and rebuild to the codes that existed before November twenty third, twenty twenty one, those shaped by IECC twenty eighteen. We ask that you do so immediately. Incremental costs of building to the new code may well force some of our neighbors to make decisions to leave our community. Tragically, some are already making that decision. Delays in the decision to provide some modest code relief are subjecting all of us to increased inflationary pressures on the cost of rebuilding and eroding already tenuous insurance resources that many of us are using and relying on to rebuild. Furthermore, homes rebuilt to the twenty eighteen code will be more energy efficient and sustainable than the vast majority of homes in Louisville that were built to codes that existed prior to twenty eighteen. In a variety of fora, council and others with no direct ties to our Louisville community have tried to reassure fire victims that external funding to fill the gap and allow homeowners the flexibility to build to the current code or some variation thereof may be forthcoming. These implied promises of our are of no help to those of us who are trying to make plans to rebuild. Those of us who lost our homes are navigating a myriad of building costs, debris removal, insurance settlement uncertainties that are hampering our ability to make clear decisions about whether or not we will rebuild or relocate. Council has control over and can very simply remove one of these major uncertainties by granting our requests for modest building and energy code relief. At the same time, council and others should continue their pursuit of gap money that, if received in a timely fashion, might allow many of us to achieve or rebuild closer to the new code. This, coupled with modest code relief, would effectively shift the risk of reimbursement of sizable financial commitments to achieve the new code based only on your promises from the victims of the fire to those of you who are making or implying those promises. Finally, I feel compelled to communicate to following to council, your tone deafness is stunning. We are not assuaged but rather angered by comments from those who have lost nothing and who have no direct connection to our community that the cost to rebuild to the new code that are at least in the many tens of thousands of dollars aren't that big of a deal. Prior to the fire, for many in our neighborhoods who lost everything, if faced with the decision to commit tens of thousands of dollars to saving for college costs, paying for daycare or eldercare, making mortgage payments, or achieving compliance to the most recent building and energy code, I suspect that just like most of you and the rest of Louisville, few would have chosen the latter as their top priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. And if folks can try to keep to three minutes, we have we have a lot of comments and we have a lot of work we need to get through. So I will have to stop people at three minutes and I apologize for that. I would like to hear everything everyone has to say. But we have to keep to the time limit so we can get through business. So if you don't finish your comments, please do email us any written comments that you have that you can provide. Next, we have Joshua Cooperman.
Hello?
Hi.
This is Josh Cooperman. I live at two sixteen Griffith Street. I wish to just make a short comment on item H in the consent consent agenda concerning the Parks Maintenance and Management Plan. I'm very supportive of a master plan for management and maintenance of the city's parks. I would like to recommend that environmental sustainability be at the heart of such a plan. And specifically that the consultant studio CPG be given guidance in this direction. I would also like to suggest that members of not only the Parks and Public Landscaping Advisory Board, but also the Sustainability Advisory Board be consulted in the development of this plan. An environmentally sustainable plan for our parks would form an integral part of a larger plan for the city to mitigate and adapt to climate change, for which I will advocate again at the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dave. Dave, we can't hear you. You might be muted on your end.
I'm not showing a microphone on his end, so.
There we go.
Here we go.
Dave?
Hello.
There we go.
Got me now. Sorry for the for the issue. Dave Nosler, six oh four Mead Court. Within days of the fire, a talented and connected group of adult graduates of Monarch and Centaurus High Schools formed the Boulder County Long Term Community Recovery Group. We meet Thursdays at six P M. On Zoom. Our focus has been to offer hope of rebuilding our community within two years versus the up to five years our residents were told to expect at the Disaster Assistance Center. We thought that goal could best be accomplished by engaging builders able to offer established home models that can be efficiently built to scale in our completely destroyed neighborhoods. About the same time, we learned that Jeff Youngstrom, a Louisville resident and Realtor, have been working a parallel but more impactful path contacting individual builders and architects and organizing the Boulder Valley Build Expo, which is scheduled for February twenty fifth and twenty sixth. Our now combined efforts have registered eleven production builders, twenty plus contract builders, and over seven hundred and fifty impacted residents for the expo. Louisville Superior, the county FEMA lenders and insurance companies will be available resources at the expo. You may ask, what's the rush? The expo is not planned as a one off. It is meant to be followed by an additional more result oriented expo later this spring. I listened to the last council meeting and I've read through the legislative request on tonight's agenda. The council and city staff's efforts to seek additional funding for residents has been great. However, nothing happens without the builders. I know you heard the public comments regarding energy and net zero present presented by Planner Ritchie with at last five victims pleading their pleading they be allowed to build to the twenty eighteen IECC. That was what the builders are telling us is their offer. Their material and skilled labor shortages are a reality and they are not willing to compound those issues with the procurement of special materials appliances and skills not already incorporated in their designs. This is a critical ask of our group and our impacted residents. Our builders are engaged but warned that they will likely not be there for the next expo without some indication from the city council that you understand builder issues and are willing to work toward a solution acceptable to both. Please give us your thoughts on this in your comments tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last comment before we take a pause, just reminding everyone at six fifteen, we're going to pause public comment and then we'll come back to it. So our last one before our pause is Larry Donner.
Yes, my name is Larry Donner. I lived at ten twenty Willow Place before the fire. I would like to ask council to consider a resolution forcing everyone in Louisville to buy their electricity from solar gardens and windmills for the next fifteen years. Right now, the only citizens afforded this opportunity are fire victims. I think if it's fair for by fire victims, it should be fair for the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And so we will take a pause for just a moment and don't worry to the folks who still have your hands up. We will come back for public comment. I am not on the agenda and I am on the consent agenda. And we're just going to briefly move to regular business item A, update from Congressman Joe Nagoo's and turn to an update from our congressman. Let's see if I can see him in the list. We've got a lot of names here.
He is in the list, but his camera and his microphone are not on.
Well, there you go. I see you now, Congressman. And so when you're ready, please go ahead and turn on your camera and microphone and we would love to hear the update from you.
Nagoo's is coming on.
Hi, everyone. This is Shane Atkinson. I I work for the congressman. He just sent a text that he's going to have to unfortunately cancel his appearance tonight. He was on a different call that ran much but we are going to definitely reschedule so that he can give you guys a great update on what everything that's happening in Washington, D.C.
Thank you so much. No problem. And so we'll go, we'll jump right back over to public comment and continue with public comment on items that are not on our agenda and items that are on our consent agenda. Next, we have R.J. Harrington.
Good evening, R.J. Harrington, four five seven East Rain Tree Court. I would offer some comment as well regarding item F on the consent agenda. I will echo neighbor Dino, Kristino. Not because I feel as if that legislative update is really concerning, but perhaps he makes a valid point in that there ought to be a little bit more public transparency before something like that is approved. With regard to that, however, I realize legislative session is in full swing and some decisions need to be made quite rapidly so that this city can engage very definitively and effectively over the course of next several weeks and few months. With that timing in mind as well, I also feel as if the various pieces that have already been brought up tonight, vis a vis the expo, vis a vis all of the efforts that are going on to find the gap funding to help folks build as resiliently as they possibly can. And with regard to our adoption of the twenty twenty one code last autumn, do also need to be deliberative and transparent and that we should not make blanket moves as knee jerk reactions and allow all of the processes that are ongoing to unfold because they are unfolding rapidly. So I will say that to all of us as residents with full transparency that our family did not lose everything. We are awaiting the results of an environmental assessment to see if our home was smoke and or char and or soot damaged. However, we don't have a burned out Hulk remaining. So I do say what I say with as much empathy as I can muster, not trying to dismiss everybody else's feelings, but to be cognizant of all of the efforts that council and our fantastic staff have been undergoing for the last forty five days. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nancy Davos.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Sorry, there's a bit of echo on my side. Really appreciate the time to comment. Really appreciate the hard work that everyone is doing to help us. I had two homes both burned, one at a thousand and three Turnberry Circle and one at nine nineteen St. Andrews Lane. I want to just continue to voice my opinion that I'd really appreciate not making fire victims the first people to have to comply with net zero. Also, you know, new wooey codes. I'm also concerned about anything that adds additional expenses that really other residents don't have to comply with seem unfair to victims of families whose entire homes have just burned and we're under a lot of financial duress, right, to try to figure out how to rebuild in a place that's already very expensive and supply chain issues and builders are giving us very high costs. And we are using very reputable builders in Boulder that have been around for a long time and we're talking to them and we are going to the building expo coming up, right, to try to figure out what our options are. We would love to stay in Louisville, but we hope the city will make some decisions soon because we need to make decisions about, you know, rebuilding soon. And so I think that's what I'm asking the city to do is make some decisions so we can go ahead and have firm things that we can tell the builders and the builders can come back with firm estimates. Right now, they don't know, right? What some of the changes might be. So it's a little bit in flux and it's hard to get realistic quotes from builders when things are in flux. And we would appreciate, you know, because we are victims of the fire, you know, not having to go through extra stuff. I still would encourage people right to build extra on top of, you know, the twenty eighteen codes. If they can add solar panels, do if you can add an E V charging station, please do, right? But not everybody's in that same boat. So I appreciate that very much. And I would invite others who believe that we really should be building to all those codes that are really expensive to come and help pay for it. Right? So it's not just coming out of the pockets of the, you know, nine hundred plus families that homes burned in the, you know, Louisville and Superior area. But the community, right, if you believe in those codes, we have some kind of fundraiser or something to help pay for it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other comments. Thank you. And that closes the public comment period on items not on the agenda and items on our consent agenda and brings council to our consent agenda. Any discussion from council members on the consent agenda? I just want to thank the members of the public who did make comments on the consent agenda on the legislative agenda, the things around urban renewal are longstanding items on our on our legislative policy around urban renewal and don't have anything to do with responsiveness to the fire. We really are trying to add legislative policies so that we can act rapidly on insurance related legislation, on any legislation that impacts funding for housing, whether it's affordable housing or environmentally friendly housing. So we are trying to be as responsive as we can to what we've heard from people so that we can go down to the Capitol and take a stand on these different topics.
Mayor, if I might interrupt, Congressman Nagoo's is now on the line.
Oh, fantastic. And and so I'll just wrap up the consent agenda and just say normally, city council does not put this number of items on our consent agenda. But we have a lot of items we've had to add to take action on that we have to get through very quickly and we won't be able to get through all our work if we take up all the items on the consent agenda. And so these are items that staff has looked at and think will likely have unanimous support. And of course, people can always take them off and make comments on them, but I just wanted to explain to folks why there are more items than usual on our content agenda. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? The non all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The consent agenda is approved. And with that, I would like to welcome Congressman Joe Nagoo's. We have been so well supported by our delegation and in particular Congressman Nagoo's has been helping get resources for our community and and helping us to rebuild. And so it's with a very warm welcome. I would like to welcome you, Congressman Nagoo's, and tell us anything you'd like to tell us.
Well, first and foremost, thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to come by and say a few words. I am back home here in Colorado, so I apologize in advance if you hear some noises. It's my three year old daughter who's watching a movie in the other room, but in a very boisterous way. So it's a pleasure to be able to join you all and I will try to keep it brief because I know that you have a very busy agenda and of course are dealing with unprecedented circumstances. I'm really here to say thank you. To thank you to your mayor, who I've spent a great deal of time with in the last several months. Of course, we've had the privilege and and I've had the pleasure of working with her for quite some time now, but in particular, the last few months have, of course, been very trying. And for each and every one of you, for all the work that you're doing, I believe I've spoken to, I think, almost every member of the council at some point or another over the course of the last two months. You know, there's not a single member of Congress or an elected official here in Colorado whom I haven't interacted with in the last sixty days who does not tell me at the very top of our conversation that I hope they I will relate to all of you their care for our community and just how much folks are holding the people of Louisville in their hearts and thinking about our community after having experienced something that was truly unprecedented and obviously at a scale at which none of us could have ever anticipated. I must say that I'm particularly proud. I'm always proud to represent Colorado Second District in Boulder County and Louisville and in Superior, but seeing the way in which both of our communities, both Superior and Louisville, and of course, unincorporated Boulder County as well, have rallied over the course of the last two months has just been nothing short of incredible for me. And it makes me so proud to be able to represent these communities, which was something that I conveyed to the president directly when he was here. And of course, something that I know several of you conveyed to him also, as did so many of our residents who are shared constituents who were impacted, who many of whom lost everything and yet have been working to try to help each other, neighbors taking care of neighbors, friends taking care of friends, really embodying that that Colorado spirit that we're so well known for. Of course, our focus has been primarily, really laser focused on doing what we can to help residents in Louisville and in Superior, taking our lead from your mayor and Mayor Folsom, as well as the county commissioners and obviously the direct communications that we're having with the families who have been impacted that started in the first hours of the fire is, I think I talked to Ashley, maybe literally, you know, within the first hour as the fire began to obviously today where that advocacy continues with FEMA. Without belaboring the point and kind of getting into the weeds too much on on all that we've been working on together, I'll just give you two updates that I think are certainly relevant to some of the conversations that you all are having. We are, of course, closely watching and monitoring the FEMA approval process with respect to the reimbursements that the county has requested and the state. We are in touch with FEMA. We were disappointed that FEMA did not grant immediately the foundational removal reimbursements that the county had requested. But we are confident that the supplemental information that the state and the county ultimately compile will be sufficient to make the case to FEMA to ensure that that is part of the reimbursement that FEMA approves. And we've reached out. We're sending another letter. We sent a letter, of course, early on, I think the same day that the state and the county submitted their initial request. But we intend to send another letter this week. Senator Hickman, Senator Bennett, and myself have also requested an individual meeting with the FEMA administrator, who, of course, many of you met, she's a Coloradan, has been here many times, to reiterate to her just how important it is that once that supplemental information is provided that that request be approved. And we're going to continue to advocate on that front. Secondly, we are very interested in making the case to HUD that this community be eligible for CBDG funding. There are a couple of obstacles that stand in our way. First, the reality that the CBDG reserve account, if you will, is fairly low. And that's a byproduct of the expenditures that have been made to respond to a wide variety of disasters that have happened in the last year. We are working with the appropriators in Congress to make the case for supplemental appropriation, which would then give HUD and I've spoken directly with Secretary Fudge, who's a friend and a former colleague in the House, the ability to have more dollars to appropriate for CBDG across the country. The second obstacle is the income limits and we're working to make the case that if, in fact, CBDG funds are available, that a waiver should be applied, which has happened in the past. Once, I believe, in the last six years, we certainly believe that the circumstances would dictate that it's warranted here, notwithstanding that our average family income here in our area might not comport with the conventional CBDG criteria. So those are just two issues that we're, of course, working on and we're look forward to continuing our advocacy on both fronts with all of you. We count on you to let us know of other areas where you think we can be helpful, your suggestions, your concerns, your comments, your questions. I think all of you have myself. And of course, have Sally Anderson, our district directors, contact information. But we're here to help. We're here to be a resource. And so I hope you'll just let us know how we can be helpful in the weeks and the months ahead. We get that this is going to be a long road. Last year, we finally finished the reimbursement process for Laramie County and Boulder County with FEMA and the twenty thirteen floods. Of course, I was not in Congress when the floods happened. That was nine years ago and yet that process still continued well into my first term in Congress. So this is going to be a long term proposition and we're here for the long haul. So thank you all again for all the work that you're doing. I know So thank you all again for all the work that you're doing. I know many of you, obviously all of you were evacuated. Um, some of you, uh, ultimately ended up losing your own homes. And, uh, I just can't tell you how proud I am of the work that you've done thus far and the work that I know you'll do in the months ahead to help our community bounce back. Better than ever before. So with that, happy to take any questions, but also don't want to monopolize your, uh, your evening.
Congressman, thank you very much for the update. Uh, we are very fortunate, uh, to have you in Congress representing us. Um, and even the, the help and support we've gotten so far financially and emotionally is tremendous. So thank you. And thank you for working so hard to keep that going. Do council members have questions for the Congressman? Councilmember Brown.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you Congressman for joining us this evening. Uh, I just wanted to ask one, uh, quick question. And I'm sure that you and your staff have been working with, uh, affected residents and are very aware. Of the under insurance problem we have here in Louisville, uh, probably the single biggest. Uh, problem facing people in Louisville who are looking to rebuild their homes. Uh, I want to flag it for you, um, obviously, and sort of advocate for you to take this on at the federal level as well. Obviously, insurance is regulated at the state level predominantly in the property and casualty arena. Um, but as we also know, um, there have been major reforms in healthcare insurance, um, at the federal level. Um, that have been very beneficial to consumers. So I would ask that you consider, um, you know, the problem. Uh, that is facing folks, um, and the under insurance problem. Um, and how the federal government might be able to regulate, um, insurance companies in a way. That would really prevent some of what, what we're seeing here in Louisville.
Yeah, Councilman Brown, uh, couldn't agree with you more. We've had conversations with Commissioner Conway, of course, who's a former colleague of mine, uh, when I was in Governor Hickman Cooper's cabinet, um, leading Dora. Uh, and FEMA and, uh, I, I must confess, I mean, we were. Well, alarmed is probably an understatement. When we heard from FEMA earlier, uh, maybe it was mid-January, just a few weeks, maybe two weeks after. The fire, uh, that the, and this was back then, of course, I'm sure it's only gotten worse, but their preliminary data indicated. That the under insurance in Louisville and Superior, uh, writ at large, victims of the Marshall Fire. Uh, was one of the highest rates they had seen in any natural disaster in the last several years. Uh, you think about tornadoes in Kentucky and, uh, you know, uh, flooding hurricanes, right, in, in Florida. And yet, uh, our community happens to be a place where under insurance is, is a level that, which even FEMA is not, uh, typically. Uh, typically doesn't see. Uh, clearly it speaks to the need for federal reforms. Uh, we are, we've had a number of conversations with the Financial Services Committee already and Representative Pearl Mutter, who serves on that committee, is very interested in this issue. Uh, of course, any legislation on that front would be prospective, uh, which is important, uh, and clearly, uh, this fire. Is a wake up call, I think, to communities across our state and across the West, uh, that, you know, the wooie is, is far larger than I think. Uh, most folks have initially contemplated. And so doing this on a prospective basis is still very important because. Fire that happened in, you know, the Marshall Fire could very well happen in Fort Collins, it could happen in Golden, it could happen in Highlands Ranch. Uh, virtually any community alongside the foothills here in our state and could be replicated in, in other states. But as I said, it's perspective and so would not be a, a particular recourse for the victims of, uh, of, of this fire. That being said, with respect to that point, it's why the CBDG funding is so important. Because that funding could ultimately be the bridge, right? It could, it could bridge that gap. Um, that we are very intimately familiar with now, having spent a lot of time with a lot of our shared constituents, residents who we're working with to. Connect them with DOI, you know, when obviously they're running into challenges with their insurance company and trying to think creatively about other solutions. Lastly, I would just say, I do think it's an, it's worth, not that I would ever put you all in the position of, of, uh, encouraging you to advocate for one thing or another. Uh, but certainly keeping your state legislative delegation apprised, because I do think there could very well be resources at the state level. That ultimately could be brought to bear for some of these homeowners in particular income brackets. Um, but, uh, you know, that's just something to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, this is Shane Atkinson. I work for the Congressman. Um, we, we do have to get on to another call.
Oh, it's, no, it's all right, Shane. We're okay, we're okay. We can go, we can keep going, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Shane.
The Vail City Council can wait. They've, they've got, not that Vail isn't very important, but I think you all have, uh, some more challenging issues right now, so.
We'll let Councilmember Fahey get the, the last word on Council, Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you Congressman for being here. I really do want to add my thanks and appreciation. For everything that you've done for the fire victims and not just for the fire victims, but for all of the residents of Louisville and Boulder County. Um, my question is, is there any way that the federal government could use? The fire victims as a, a kind of learning, uh, example for the country. On a, maybe in the Build Back Better program. Um, and how we could make the country more resilient and more, uh, climate resilient.
Congressman Nagus.
Well, thank you, uh, Councilwoman, uh, for the kind words and of course for your leadership during this, this crisis and, um, all that, that your family has been through. You know, it, you couldn't be more right. When the Cameron Peak, our, our state is no stranger to wildfire. We, we all know that well. We, I've lived in Colorado since I was five years old. I, you know, remember wildfires as a, as a kid growing up, as a teenager. But what we're experiencing now is, is, is a, a level with just fundamentally different, right? It's a paradigm shift. And after the Cameron Peak, uh, and East Troublesome Fires, which of course were in our district in twenty twenty. In Grand County and Larimer County, I received a lot of calls from colleagues, uh, at the time offering to help and, you know, expressing their condolences to our community. Uh, after, and, and of course, those fires were very different, right? There are fires that spanned two hundred thousand acres that took three, four months to fully contain. Every call that I've had from a colleague, uh, post-Marshall Fire, I have tried to. Reiterate to them, to, to explain to them that what happened here in Louisville and in Superior could literally happen anywhere. Um, with the, the, the Marshall Fire is very, very different than the Cameron Peak Fire and the East Troublesome Fire. Which obviously are very unique in terms of, you know, being on Forest Service land and, um, you could have wide swaths of, of our state. Uh, but I've tried to explain to my colleagues from New Jersey and Georgia and Seattle and Indiana. That what happened in Louisville and Superior is coming to a neighborhood near you. Um, if we don't take climate change seriously and aren't willing to make the necessary investments, both to address climate change writ at large, of course, principally. But then also, uh, invest in climate adaptation measures, resiliency and, and mitigation efforts. That, uh, are going to have to extend to communities far beyond the traditional way in which we have thought about that. Uh, and the same paradigm shift, by the way, applies to the coastal adjacent communities in other parts of our country. That, you know, didn't necessarily think that they would be subject to other types of natural disasters and yet, um, are now becoming the epicenter of it. So yes, I think that we're continuing to, you know, make the case to my colleagues that the investments in Build Back Better, this is exactly why. Uh, we ought to get those across the finish line, um, so that we can ultimately protect communities like this one in the future. Uh, but yeah, it, it's, it's a wake up call. I mean, it really is. And, and it, it is interesting. I have had many colleagues who have spent some time. Actually, you know, looking at some of the images from the Marshall Fire and visiting with me who, who seemed to get and recognize that this is something very different. Uh, and, uh, could very well become our new normal if, uh, if we don't get serious and, 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 and on a hurry.
Thank you very much, Congressman. Any members of the public care to comment on this agenda item tonight? Thank you, everyone, and thank you very much Congressman for coming and giving us an update. Thank you for all of your communication and working with us so far through the event. And we will absolutely continue to be in touch with you. Thank you.
Thank you all. Take care.
And so that takes us, um, actually backward in our agenda. Uh, and so we are now on council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. I just want to make a couple of quick comments. Um, the, uh, Mayor of Commerce City sent us a letter today. Um, they have made a contribution in. Um, to the community foundation, uh, to support our community's rebuild, to help, um, survivors. And so that's fantastic and we should thank Commerce City for doing that for us. Um, I also wanted to just read, um, uh, President Biden and, um, First Lady Jill Biden sent a letter to our community. Um, they say, "The devastation of the Marshall Fire was heartbreaking to see and we're inspired by the courage of the families that we met during our visit." "We're moved by the way the Coloradans have stepped up for one another. As folks in Louisville continue to recover and rebuild. Know the federal government will be right there with you as long as it takes. We will get through this together. Keep the faith." Joe Biden, Jill Biden. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. Um, it's really fantastic to see our federal delegation all the way up to the President of the United States, supporting our community. And helping us to get the resources that we need. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that that letter came through as well. And any other council, um, informational comments tonight? Councilmember Lay. Councilmember Lay, your mute.
Some say I'm better than, better that way anyway, right? Um, don't smile. Um, thank you very much, uh, uh, Mayor. I, I hope we can post that letter. Um, I think what's, one of the things that's really hard is. Uh, I did hear the comment earlier about. Statements about money are not the same thing as money. And statements about being supportive aren't the same as support. And, um, I know that when you met with the President, you conveyed this. Um, but I, I kind of wanted to, to mention to the general public that. Uh, we expect and will continue to hold the President and the, uh, Congress, uh, accountable. To, to help us out. They've said they're going to be working with us and we'll, uh, make them work. Because that's what they're there to do for us. So, um, and especially in a horrible time like this. Um, the second thing, um, is that. I know that people continue to send us notes, um, about issues relating to the building code. And, uh, uh, the, that we're going to be addressing again in a couple of weeks and I appreciate that. I think we all do. There's more information that's coming in. We should be getting information from, um, the Division Insurance and that's good. Um, by the end of the month, um, and, uh, just know, uh. I guess this, I'm just speaking for myself, but I bet others probably feel this way too. Know that we are considering the issues that have been raised around. Building codes very carefully and we're going to continue to do that. Um, we've spent, uh, some time on that. We haven't yet. Reached resolution. We know that people want resolution. And we need to deliver that. Um, and we need to deliver that in, um, a way which recognizes the plight of the people. That are going to be most, uh, earnestly affected and most quickly affected. So just know that that's very deeply on the minds and hearts of all of us as we, as we go forward. And thank you for the graciousness and the patience that you've shown, uh, the city on, on all these things. Because, um, we appreciate that it's, uh, there are a lot of things up in the air. There's a lot of uncertainty and we're going to try our best to get that uncertainty thoughtfully resolved where we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Any other, um, pertinent comments from council members on items not on the agenda? Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple really quick updates, since we have about a hundred people on the, uh, meeting at the moment. Wanted to let people know that on Monday, we have our first recovery community planning effort meeting. These are neighborhood meetings, um, with affected or impacted property owners. If you are an impacted property owner and you have not received an email about this or an invitation, please give a call to our. Call line, which is seven two zero eight two four thirty one hundred, and then we'll get that information in your hands. Um, also, um, we do have demolition permits out the door, so there's about sixteen property owners who have started private demolition removal. Uh, we stood up a streamlined process for that. We're also working to wrap up some streamlining of our rebuilding. Or reconstruction permitting process, um, so that's well underway. And, um, we're also working hard to do everything we can to make sure that when people get on the ground with reconstruction or rebuilding. That that process goes smoothly. There's a possibility of a lot of properties under construction at the same time. And so we're working on some steps we can put in place to help mitigate that and, and ease some of the congestion issues and those type of things. That we're anticipating might be challenges out there. Uh, the last thing I would note, I'm hoping, I'm hoping within the next week or so. We have some more concrete information on the private property debris removal program. I know people are eager for that information, so we're pushing hard to get that out. Ho- hopefully in a week or so, we'll have more answers. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Durbin, and that'll take us to our second item of regular business tonight, which is ordinance number eighteen twenty four, series twenty twenty two. An emergency ordinance addressing zoning regulations affecting structures damaged or destroyed by the Marshall Fire. And authorizing the zoning administrator to reconcile discrepancies. To facilitate rebuilding of the same. This is our first and final reading and public hearing because we are adopting this as an emergency ordinance. I will, um, turn it over to our planning director, Rob Sacaro, in just one moment, but I just want to, um. Let folks know that we have several objectives in restoring our community. And we are really trying, um, our best to be transparent, fair and work quickly for everyone. And so we are not doing an emergency ordinance to rush things, uh, and skip them through, but we're doing an emergency ordinance. To hurry things along so that people can start rebuilding faster. So I just want to make that clear. And we are very interested in hearing people's comments tonight and getting this right. Uh, but we want to make sure we act as quickly as we can for the community, so people can get started as quick as they can. With that, I'll turn it over to our planning director, Rob Sacara.
All right. Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Stolzmann, members of City Council. I will be presenting this item for staff. Um, on this ordinance, I just want to start by saying that the ordinance doesn't provide changes to zoning in and of itself. It doesn't set new zoning or provide any clarifications to zoning. It's really setting a process. And an administrative expedited process is the intent of what we're looking at here. Um, and I'll get into the details of how that's structured and why we're doing it, but I wanted to just start off with that. Um, you know, so far, we've been working in the planning department really hard to get out information with what we know. We've started looking at all of the fire impacted neighborhoods. There's about fifteen different residential subdivisions with. Um, that have damaged or destroyed structures. And so we've put out summaries, um, for many of these neighborhoods. Um, we've started looking at redevelopment codes and we've noticed that there are some gaps or omissions or contradictions that have, you know, developed. Over, you know, the decades since these neighborhoods were originally built. So the intent again is to create a process where we can very quickly provide clarification. So that people can move on with developing their plans and getting to the permit stage and rebuilding as quickly as they can. So what we're looking at doing, if this ordinance passes, is to authorize the zoning administrator. To issue summary standards for these neighborhoods with damaged and destroyed properties. So again, the intent is to not rewrite the zoning. If there are clear standards within our zoning ordinances, within our group development plans. That have been implemented consistently over time, those standards will stay. There won't be any changes to those standards. The intent here is where there are, um, you know, changes in interpretations or gaps in the code. Or, um, you know, areas that need to be filled in so that people have clarity. And we can provide clarity that reflects the character of the neighborhood as it was originally built. And there haven't been any major, you know, purposeful, um, amendments to the zoning code over time. Uh, we want to provide the, that clarification as quickly as possible, and this is the process to do that. I'm going to talk about some examples of where we think there are some gaps, so people understand what, where we would be providing clarification. Another part of this ordinance is it would allow administrative minor impact variances with an expedited process. This process already exists in our zoning code. Anybody can apply for a minor impact variance. It allows the zoning administrator to issue up to a ten percent variance in a measurable zoning standard. If you meet certain criteria and there's some public notice requirements, um, this would allow a, a expedited process. For properties that are rebuilding after the fire. So that would provide another level of flexibility if we run into issues. As people are looking to rebuild. Um, there, there would be a backstop for this, um, to the, our Board of Adjustment. So if there is a summary coming from the zoning administrator, um, or a determination. Uh, that somebody is not happy with, uh, that they don't think is supported, um, you know. you know, with the applicable documents and evidence, that can be appealed to our Board of Adjustment. That's a resident board appointed by City Council. They hear appeals and variances all the time. So this, this is something that they can rule on if there are any issues as well. As the mayor said, this is an emergency ordinance so that homeowners can continue to work on their designs with their architects and designers with more clarity on some of these standards. So I just, again, we haven't developed the summary standards, but we're working on them. If this does pass, we do want to get all of the summary standards out no later than the end of this month. We'll get them out as soon as we can. But we're, you know, definitely no later than the end of this month. And so we haven't identified everything, but there are some neighborhoods. Some neighborhoods are fine. Everything's very clear, but some of them have some conflicts in lot coverage standards. So a lot of our zoning codes have a, a, what we call a lot coverage standard. That's a percentage of your lot that be, can be covered by structures. And so that's intended to make sure it's to preserve the character of your neighborhood. So you don't build too big. You have, you know, adequate yards and, and spaces between your neighbors. So it's in addition to your setbacks. That's the minimum distance back from your property lines. Some of our neighborhoods also have this percentage coverage standard. So there are some conflicts that will probably need to be clarified. One thing we're seeing in some neighborhoods is there are omissions on street side setbacks. So every home has a side setback. If you're on, on an interior lot line, so this is in between the houses, your neighbor's house, you have a minimum setback. But on corner lots, one of your sides is adjacent to a street. So some of our neighborhoods don't have setbacks on that street side yard. And if you go to the underlying zoning, there's a very big setback that it says you should have, which is 30 feet. And in some of our neighborhoods, the houses aren't 30 feet back. They're much closer to the street. So we want to make sure that they can build back to what they had before. Many of our plans are silent on height standards. So we want to make sure that there's consistency in height. Fencing, there may be some work on fencing in some neighborhoods that have transitioned away from underlying standards over time. And then lot orientation, this is a corner lot issue. Just, I'm going to give one more example in a little more detail on these corner lots where we're seeing some issues. One of our ordinances say that if you're on a corner lot, the shortest side of your, the, the shortest part of your lot should be the front of your lot. But on some corner lots, houses are addressed and oriented to the wider side of your lot. And so that's really how we've applied the front, despite what our ordinance says. So we could provide clarification on that. And then that side setback that I mentioned, here's just a diagram to give an example of a particular property where if we applied our zoning code, it would require that the rebuild of this property be set back 30 feet where the pre-fire as-built condition was 20 feet. So if this ordinance passes, we could provide clarification in this neighborhood. That lot orientation question that I mentioned, that would dictate that this lot line is shorter than this lot line. So this should be their front of their house. Well, in fact, this property was developed facing the other street. And so we would be able to provide clarification on these lots and say, you know, previous to the fire, the as-built condition, everything was applied a little bit differently than our code. So we're going to create a summary standard. These standards would become an official part of their development plans. They would, they would dictate how those properties could develop unless the City Council changed the zoning in the future. This would become their new zoning standard. And so we would probably record these documents, these summaries with the county clerk and recorder so that it runs with the land and all future property owners would have clarification. So in addition to those who are rebuilding, these standards would, would clarify what the standards are for all development, again, unless zoning changes in the future by action of the City Council. Planning Commission did review this last week, February 10th. So they had their regular meeting on Thursday. They recommended approval with a couple of conditions, which were really to clarify a couple of items. One was the definition of damaged structure. So in the ordinance, it says that damaged and destroyed structures would, you know, have some of the benefits of this. And I think there was some question about if a property, let's say, just has ash damage and smoke damage, and they have to do an interior work to remove insulation, remove drywall, remove flooring, just to address that. Is that, you know, would some of these provisions apply? That isn't how we're defining a damaged structure. That's something that has structural damage and would have to have portions of the structure actually rebuilt, if not all of the structure rebuilt. Then they would have the benefit of the potential minor impact variance. So we didn't make any amendments to the ordinance in reviewing this with City Attorney Kelly. We felt that the language in the ordinance was very clear that this would only apply to the rebuilding of damaged and destroyed structures. So, but we did want to point out that Planning Commission wanted clarification. We feel the current language is okay, but if council wants language in the ordinance itself, we can certainly look at that. Planning Commission also recommended a sunset provision in the ordinance to make sure that, you know, five, 10 years from now, that, you know, somebody isn't coming and arguing for a minor impact variance without the appropriate process for a, a, a normal development. We felt the language, again, talking to City Attorney Kelly, that the current language, it was clear that this would only apply to the rebuilding process and the restoration process. So we don't believe any additional language is needed, but again, if council would like us to explore that, we can. So staff is recommending approval as drafted, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members? Just want to thank staff for working on this so quickly and getting this in front of us. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have two questions. One is in the case where the city has certain ordinances or setback requirements, and an HOA has different ones, which ones take precedence or which ones do they have to follow? The more restrictive or the city over HOA? Or how does that work?
Sure. So the city is really only enforcing our own ordinances. We, you know, we do not weigh in on the HOA's requirements. That's a private contract with those property owners. You know, typically what I would say is if our zoning ordinance is more restrictive, you know, everybody has to follow our zoning ordinance if it's more restrictive. You know, the, but we really can't weigh in on the, a private covenant. That's really a private contract that we can't weigh in on.
Okay. And then my other question is on the fences. There's been a lot of discussion or articles that I've been reading about the, the, I guess, the composition of fences. And should we not allow six-foot wooden fences that act as the wick? Or, you know, what should we do? This ordinance would not affect that requirement at all, would it?
No, this isn't intended to address that particular issue. I think if council wanted to adopt a new ordinance to try to facilitate, you know, something that was a little more resilient in how people rebuild their fences, we should probably address that with a separate ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. Councilmember Brown?
Hey, thanks, Mayor. And, and thank you, Director Sakaro, for your presentation. I just want to be clear that this, just from a very kind of basic perspective, this, this ordinance is a, is a kind of a process ordinance. But it doesn't speak to the specifics of a name, a particular neighbor's or residence situation, but would be, those standards would be developed through the, the summary standards process or through the minor variance process or both.
Yeah. So I think it would be, we would be clarifying standards through the summary process, and we'd be issuing these summary documents. I think that the, then all, someone could also request a minor impact variance through this process as well. And that's a separate process that somebody could go through and we could grant that, that variance on a case-by-case basis. That, so again, the Board of Adjustment could, could be a backstop on that. Certainly, if somebody also wasn't happy or wanted further relief or adjustment or any other additional regulation, they could ask council to consider that as a separate ordinance, I think would be the best process.
Thanks, Director. And just, just so the, can you, can you speak a little bit to the 10% standard? So in some of these, you know, I've, I've definitely talked with residents whose homes were built too close to the property line relative to what the zoning would require, right? I mean, obviously it would depend on exactly where their home was built, but is it, is it, it isn't, it isn't a guarantee under this, i- is it a guarantee under this ordinance that they would be able to rebuild on their existing footprint? Or is it, or, you know, what, can you speak to that a little bit, I guess? This is my, you know, they're five feet from the property line. They're supposed to be 10 feet from the property line. Is that, what does that 10% mean? And how does that work?
Yeah. So I, I would say that this ordinance hopefully will address almost all issues, but there may be some outlier issues. And anybody can apply to the Board of Adjustment for an actual variance, which would be outside of this ordinance. But we are trying to, again, look at a neighborhood as a whole. And if there was a character, you know, if there was a, a character set through the zoning standard, you know, they would be able to build back as a neighborhood to that standard. I think if somebody built, you know, there's a 10-foot setback and they, there was a construction error and they were nine feet into that setback, we could approve that administrative variance. If there was more than that, and that isn't consistent with the established character of the neighborhood, they should probably go through our actual Board of Adjustment variance process. We wouldn't be, I don't, you know, I don't think we'd be wanting to do kind of a one-off major exception. I hope we don't run into that extreme of an issue, though. I hope we're able to get 99, if not 100% of the issues addressed.
So, so this, just, I'm sorry to blabber this point, but if there was a character of the neighborhood that said like, you know, the developer 30 years ago built all the homes too close to the property line, five feet too, too close or something like that, right? And the character of the neighborhood, that is something that you all could address through this ordinance. But if it was one home that the developer screwed up on or whatever, then, then that would be something that they'd need to go through the full variance process for. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I think that's what we want to do. I, I think the, you know, we will, there are some instances too where people have built over time, and maybe they didn't get a permit, or there was a mistake in the application of. And so I don't think we want people to build back if there were mistakes. Or they didn't actually, you know, not, not, you know, over many, many decades, it could have been a previous property owner, right? That built without a permit or did an addition or built a deck without a permit and has an issue. So we don't necessarily want them to build back in violation of the code. But if, for example, you know, our underlying zoning for some reason would dictate a 20-foot setback, but, you know, there's several homes in the neighborhood that actually were built to 10 feet. Then I think that, you know, that's where we want to put, create a summary standard to say, you know, there was, there's evidence that there was intent that these homes were allowed to go to 10 feet instead of 20, and then create, you know, formalize that standard through this process.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Director. And thank you, fellow council members, for my, allowing me to ask those questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Mayor Pretown Maloney?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think Council Brown asked a lot of the questions. I was going to, I want to thank Director Sakaro, and I want to thank Planner Ritchie for your fast work on this. You know, the intention of this is to help people build back on the footprint that they had their homes. So I think this is very important, and I'm looking forward to the public comments. I'm looking forward to us moving to a point of moving ahead with this so people can move ahead with rebuilding their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. That was a, a great presentation, Director Sakaro. I, I wanted to sort of underscore one piece of it, just make sure my own understanding is correct, that we, we've certainly gotten comments here and there from people that they, they know they don't have an HOA, but they know that they have covenants. And sometimes that gets a little bit lost in transition. I like, a lot of people are getting themselves educated about that, but this is not a person who's enforcing covenants, right? This, this process is not there for that.
That's correct. Yes, this would just be addressed. We would just be reviewing how we've issued building permits in relation to our ordinances and development plans over time.
Yeah. And, and I think the question that I, I've gotten these questions from time to time about, well, you know, we, we had a certain character in our neighborhood. And the city is going to be there enforcing that, right? And, you know, this is partly what, what you've been talking about is, is what kinds of standards are going to be subject of the purview of this process and which ones are not. Because I, I think it's really important to be as clear as, as you can about what the process is not going to cover. And if you can, if you could elaborate just a little bit more on that, I'd sure appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I think that, that's a, that's a great question. I think what we're anticipating to address with this are what we call the Balkan yard standards, which in our code, that's really the envelope of where you can build. We, we do not have many, if any, design standards on materials or how your house looks. And I know a lot of these neighborhoods had a lot of uniformity in how they looked. They had, they had similar materials. There were, you know, certain builders came in and had certain models. And so you'll be in a neighborhood and you'll see several of the same model. So similar shapes and materials. This would not, because our ordinances and development plans didn't have those standards, those were just how the developer decided to build those neighborhoods in the first place. We won't have those regulations. So I think as people come in and rebuild in these neighborhoods, there's going to be, I would anticipate, much more variation in design and architecture and materials. Again, all we're talking about is the three-dimensional envelope of where you're allowed to build.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks, Mayor. Rob, nice to see you again. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm absolutely in support of this ordinance. I think that the intention here is pretty obvious. It's one of those like, we, we need to make a rule to support. We all understand this. Your house burned down and you want to rebuild it exactly as it was. That should be possible, right? And so what I'm, what I'm hearing mostly is, you know, the ability for people to follow the same footprint, even if orientation rules have changed and they're in a unique spot. And so, you know, I, I think this is, I think people are very nervous about this as it was coming as an agenda topic that, you know, like, wait a minute, and now, and, and now what? And now what's the thing that's going to stand in the way of me rebuilding? I think it's really clear from your presentation and from council comments that this is an attempt to clear some of that up and to say the intention here is for everyone to get to rebuild the, the footprint that their house was on. Is there, and I, I read over it, obviously, but my question is, is there something in here around secondary owners? So if someone, if someone sells, does this change? So, so I had a home. It was on a footprint. I sold my lot to someone else. Do they get to build in the same way? I mean, my, in general, my principle is the things we're doing as a council are about the people who lost their homes due to the fire. But when we're trying to match a community, if, if, if the city concept is 20 feet and the neighborhood is going to 10 feet and someone buys one of these lots, well, if all their neighbors are 10 feet, it seems like, so is this, sorry, is this going to apply to people regardless of is this going to apply to people regardless of the time of their ownership? Is this about the neighborhood or about the owner of the building?
Director Sakaro.
Yeah, thank you. So the the summary standards, we intend to apply to the whole neighborhood. So I I think that those are broader standards and you, we probably want consistency in development standards for the whole neighborhood, regardless of if it's somebody's rebuilding immediately or they're selling their lot and somebody else is rebuilding. The and and that would also apply, you know, 10 years from now when somebody wants to do an addition on the house, those standards would be applicable unless something changes through a different plan or an ordinance. So they're intended to run with the land. The expedited minor impact variances are intended to apply to the rebuild or restoration. Now, that could happen on different timeframes as well. You know, somebody could rebuild their house, you know, very quickly, hopefully, but some may not rebuild or they'll sell to somebody else who builds and they're actually rebuilding the house, but it's a new owner in the future. The way it's written is they would have the benefit of that minor impact variance as well. Now, once that house is rebuilt, they would have to go through the standard minor impact variance. They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be allowed to have an expedited process after that.
Thank you, Director Sakaro. And so for, we will go to our first round of public comment on this agenda topic. And just remember that since it's an ordinance, we'll have two rounds of public comment. Our first commenter tonight is Scott Hafer. And just a reminder to everyone, please tell us your name and your address and tell us what you'd like to tell us. You'll have three minutes. You might be muted on your end, Scott. It looks like we can hear you.
Yeah, I was not planning to speak.
Oh.
So I don't know what's going on there.
Oh, you don't have to. I was, your hand is raised right now. So if you don't want to speak, we can go to the next person. But you are more than welcome to tell us what you'd like to tell us if you want to tell us something. All right. Next in the queue, we have Larry Donner.
Yes, I'd like to, oh, my name is Larry Donner. I lost my house at 1020 Willow Place. And I'd like to speak in support of this ordinance. I trust our staff to clear up any uncertainties we have and give us quick resolution, which will allow our contractors and architects to get to work so that we can design our rebuild and and move along. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. I support it.
Thank you. Next, we have John Mahaly.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Thank you. This is John Mahaly, 1018 Arapaho Circle. I'm speaking to voice my support for approving this ordinance. I served on the Board of Adjustment for the last two years. And so I'm very familiar with our variance process here. And as you know, one of the criteria that our city staff evaluates in their report is the impact to the character of the neighborhood, which has been discussed. So I'd like to explain, so I'd like to convey that in my experience on the Board of Adjustment, I found that the staff demonstrated thoughtful and careful judgment. And in my opinion, the staff consistently did an excellent job making recommendations that defended the character of our neighborhoods. And so throughout this, in my experience, it was clear to me that the city staff strongly value the character of our neighborhoods and community. Therefore, if approved, I'm confident that the city staff and zoning administrator will be judicious and helpful in helping the victims rebuild. And so most importantly, given that the long lead times and inflation exacerbate this under this under insurance issue that many of us face, it's really critical that we improve administrative efficiency where we can to minimize the time for victims to rebuild. Therefore, please vote yes on ordinance 1824. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christian Dino.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
We can.
My name's Christian Dino, 967 Eldorado Lane. Lost my home in the fire. And I too would like to voice my support for this resolution. I believe that city staff has our best interests at heart. And in terms of expediting any negotiations, review process and design with the city, this this really needs to be in place so that it doesn't slow down the process further. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have RJ Harrington.
RJ Harrington, 457 East Rain Tree Court. I was privileged to attend the Planning Commission meeting last week. And so want to echo my support again for ordinance 1824, especially in the light of staff stepping up fast and doing what is necessary as quickly as possible. Another indication of the hard work that's being accomplished. And thank you, Planner Sakaro, for addressing the question that the Planning Commission brought up last week regarding that definition and for clarifying that the way the ordinance is written does in fact speak to that structural damage that alleviates any concerns that I brought up during last week's public hearing. Finally, just a point of order, although I am perfectly happy to be flexible. The agenda said that the first round of public comments would come after Planner Sakaro's presentation, followed by council question comments, followed by additional public comments. I'm completely copacetic with the way it went. But if that was the way it was supposed to go based on the agenda itself, just Robert's rules pestering me continuously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Russell Moore. You might be muted on your end.
Yeah, thank you. I support 1824 and I concur with my colleagues who live in the neighborhood. I live at 1013 Arapaho Circle. I lost my home in the fire.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any other public comments for this first round. Thank you, RJ. We do post those order of things so people have a general idea how we will proceed. But those are just the different topics that must happen. So we're doing okay on the rules. And just the things that are really important is that we get two rounds of public comment on an ordinance and that I open and close the public hearing. And so thank you, and we'll continue on. Any other council questions or comments from folks? Mayor Protem Maloney?
Well, the public comment, I think, you know, pretty much supports us moving in this direction. And I don't have any reason to discuss this further. I want to thank Director Sakaro. I want to thank Lisa Ritchie, the the planning person that worked on this terrific work. So, you know, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1824, series 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And just I just want to clarify for the record that we're approving ordinance number 1824, series 2022, as an emergency ordinance. And I see nodding from the motioner and the seconded, Councilmember Fahey.
I was just going to do what's just been done, either move or second. But I also want to thank Director Sakaro and Planner Ritchie that I think that they have really stepped up. They're just doing a fabulous job of making this process as as straightforward and well-publicized as possible. So thank you all.
Thank you. I will also speak in favor of the ordinance tonight. I want to also extend a great deal of thanks to staff. The entire planning department, you know, under the leadership of of Rob and Lisa have been doing a tremendous amount of work. Every planner in the department has been in there late at night when I've been at City Hall and really working extra hours to get this in front of us as quickly as they can, foregoing vacations, foregoing meals. And so I just want the public to understand the great deal of work that our staff has done to be able to get this to where it is. And they, I know they'll keep working really hard for us to get this all sorted out because this is a lot of technical work that is ahead of them. And I just, I want to extend appreciation on behalf of the entire community to the city staff that have been working so hard on this. We'll take it back to the members of the public for another and final round of comments. If there were any additional public comments on this topic, please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. Seeing none, I'll bring it back over to council. Are there any other council comments? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll ask City Clerk Smith for a roll call on the motion. Councilmember Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lake.
Yes.
Councilmember Most.
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries unanimously. Our next item of business tonight is Resolution Number Nine, series 2022, a resolution approving a preservation and restoration grant for the LaSalle House located at 833 Jefferson Avenue. And I will turn our staff presentation over to Kim Bauer, our planner and preservation expert.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Can everyone see my presentation? Okay, I just want to confirm.
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you so much. So good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. I'm Kim Bauer, the historic preservation planner for the city. I have before you this evening a request for approval of a historic preservation grant fund request. So just a little bit of context here on this slide before you. The image on the left gives you some aerial context of the subject property's location there, just near the corner of Jefferson Avenue and Walnut Street, as outlined in the white bolded box. And on the right of the slide, the star indicates the general location of 833, just in in context of the Old Town overlay. So here, the next two slides I'm going to show with this one and the next one are just some context for the work that has been done over time already. So this property was landmarked in 2020 and at that same time also applied for grants. So some work has been completed. So the the image on the left of your slide is from the 1948 Boulder County's Assessor photo. The photo on the right is what it looked like prior to the landmarking and grant work. So prior to that 2020. And then these two photos before you are how it looks currently. So stemming from, again, some of that previously approved grant work. I did want to follow up with some quick context around the request itself. As I briefly mentioned a moment ago, the property is already landmarked and had a previous preservation grant approved in the amount, pardon me, of $17,433. Both of those approvals came in 2020. The current request before you this evening is for the remainder of the grant funds. So that would be 22,567, which together would total the maximum grant allowance of $40,000 for residential property. Resolution 17, series 2019, which outlines a lot of our historic preservation fund work, does allow for grants to be applied for up to 36 months after new landmarks are approved. So just that that note as well, that this request would be in the allowable timeframe. In the slide before you, this just lists some of the common work that's typically that typically can qualify for grants themselves. And as you can see, the proposed work seeking grant funds this evening would fall under these categories as the request is proposing to repair sections of the foundation and crawl space and floor section, floor structure, pardon me, as well as work on some site grading. And then this this, for a more detailed breakdown of how the scope of the proposed grant work would beat the grant qualifications, you can see it delineated on the table before you. And this table shows both the amounts of the fund request as well as the matching grant amount request. And so the total would be that 22,567. The total of the amount of work proposed is higher, you can see in that 49,000. But since the limitation for grants are 40, that's why the it's a little bit less. And with that, staff recommends approval of Resolution Nine, series 2022, approving the proposed historic preservation fund application for 833 Jefferson. And then I'm here for any questions. And I know that the applicant Keith Keller is here as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Planner Bauer. And Keith, would you like to make any, say, say any presentation or make any comments to council? I know you were here. We saw you. Let's see, while we're waiting on that, we'll turn it over to members of the public.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for allowing me to join your meeting. I'll just be here to answer any questions you may have concerning this item and on the agenda.
Thank you so much, Keith. And so with that, we'll turn it over to members of the public. If there are any members of public that would care to comment on this agenda item tonight, please raise your hand and tell us what you'd like to tell us. Seeing none, that takes us back over for council discussion, question and comments or action. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And Mr. Keller, I appreciate you landmarking your house and doing the historic preservation work. It's really important for the preservation of the character of our downtown. I had one question for Planner Bauer. There's no restriction, obviously, in our code on applying for multiple grants. I guess like as long as the, you can apply for multiple grants as long as they don't in some total more than $40,000. Is that right?
That's exactly right. And then the only other sort of limit limitation or restriction would be that timing. So if it's, you know, if you've landmarked and it's been, let's say, seven years and you hadn't applied for, that's where it sort of laps. But in this case, it's both under the 40 and then under that timeframe.
Cool. Okay, thank you. I'm I'm very happy to support this. And again, Mr. Keller, thank you very much for bringing this forward and doing the work and preserving your home.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Lake.
There we go. Then I'm going to move for passage of Resolution Number Nine, series 2022, a resolution approving a preservation and restoration grant for the LaSalle House located at 833 Jefferson Avenue.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Councilmember Most. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, it's nice to have an item on our agenda that feels normal. This is something we all care about a lot. We're talking about, you know, rebuilding major parts of our community. And I think we're very appreciative to you, Mr. Keller, for appreciating the historical nature of your home, which is obviously already landmarked. And I think it's great that the city will continue to support you in maintaining this historic home and and making it something that stands for another 100 years or so. So so thank you for bringing this to us and thank you for investing so much in your own home and glad to be a part of of doing that with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Lake.
Yeah, one one other thing that I think just I would say is it's always great to see people walk the walk and walk the walk the talk because Mr. Keller is part of the HPC and it's it's nice to see him making use of of that here. And so thanks and kudos.
All right, seeing no other comments, I will ask City Clerk Smith for a roll call on approving Resolution Number Nine, series 2022. Councilmember Dickinson.
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lake.
Yes.
Councilmember Most.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Our next item of business this evening is 841. There must be more to it. Oh, I see. It's a Resolution Number 10, series 2022, a resolution designating the Montoni House located at 841 Jefferson Avenue as a historic landmark and Resolution Number 11, series 2022, a resolution approving a preservation and restoration grant for the Montoni House located at 841 Jefferson Avenue. And so, Kim, please take it away.
Thank you so much. So good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council, Kim Bauer, historic preservation planner. So we do have a request to landmark and approve a historic preservation grant fund for the property at 841 Jefferson. So again, just for some context of location, this is actually just directly north of the property we just looked at. So it's at the corner of Walnut and and Jefferson. And then again, on the right-hand side, or pardon me, it's also outlined in white there. So the blue that you see on the screen is just from our map and it indicates that 833 is already a landmark. So just to differentiate that. And then on the right-hand side, again, that star just indicates where it's located in general in Old Town. And then this slide before you now shows both the historic and current conditions of the property, or pardon me, the two historic conditions of the property with the photo on the left from the 1950 Boulder County Assessor's card and then a photo of the property as it looked after some additions in 1959. And so to first review the landmark request as outlined per our code, we look at specific criteria for landmarking that includes age, its architectural significance, social or geographic significance, as well as its physical integrity. And so staff finds that this property does meet the age and physical integrity requirements. As we know, the structure was constructed more than 50 years ago, about 1900 is its estimated build date. The additions and renovations to the original structure, which you saw on that previous slide, were completed in 1959 and they themselves are more than 50 years old. So therefore, those additions have also gained historic significance. So just a point of note there. 841 Jefferson meets the architectural significance criteria through both its turn of the century wood frame vernacular. Eight forty-one Jefferson meets the architectural significance criteria through both its turn-of-the-century wood frame vernacular structure that was common in this part of Louisville. At that time, it was first constructed, as well as the nineteen fifty-nine renovation to showcase minimal traditional ranch characteristics, which were popular post-World War II. Eight forty-one Jefferson also meets cultural significance through its relation to the Monsoni family. And then, to move forward to some of the grants, for the grant requests, to supply some context again, just as we just saw, this just lists some of the common work that typically qualify for grant funds. So, the items before you this evening for this item would fall under these items as the grant fund would be for siding work, as well as work to repair sections of the soffit and flashing and a couple of window replacements. So, all fall under what you see before you there. And then, lastly, this slide shows the work requesting the grant funds in a little more detail. And I do just want to take a moment to clarify that in the case of this grant request, the applicant has already completed the work. Section twelve H of Resolution Seventeen, Series 2019, does specifically allow this type of request as long as the work is qualified for, to get eligible for grant funds in general, that the applicant has receipts for all the work being requested, meaning they've already done it and paid for it and can show that. And then, that the work was completed within five years prior to the effective date of landmarking. So, it couldn't be any further back from when they're requesting to be landmarked. So, in this case, the applicant has presented staff with receipts. The work is grant-qualified, and the work was done within the last five years. So, staff does find it meets that. And so, you can see before you, the total requested work was thirty-four thousand, meaning the matching grant request would be seventeen in the case this evening. And so, therefore, staff recommends approval of both Resolution Ten and Eleven, Series 2022, to approve the local landmark designation and the matching historic preservation fund grant requests. And staff recommends the naming of the property to be the Monsoni House. And with that, I'm here for any questions, as well as I have Matt Goldstein, the applicant here, as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And so, we'll turn it over to members of the public. Oh, actually, I see Matt just turned on his camera. Matt, did you want to make some comments to council? You're muted. Sorry.
Sorry. Hi, I just, you know, we'll be here to answer any questions. I'd just like to say that I'm the third owner of this house, and I take it very seriously. I've lived here since 2013, and my whole goal is just to be the steward of this house. And I think it's a pretty important location, being one of the three lots on the Memory Square Park. And so, just wanted to make sure that it would be here for a long time.
Thank you very much. Any members of the public care to comment this evening? First, we have KT McCoy.
Hi, good evening. I would like to apply for a grant as an original homeowner of my lot on nine seven seven Arapahoe Circle. I would like a matching grant up to forty thousand dollars. I have been downgraded on my SBA loan from only seventy-one thousand dollars, and twenty-four hours later, I'm told only fifty-eight thousand dollars. The government is not stepping up for homeowners like us who are elderly. It seems like everyone wants to support the younger generation. My husband is seventy-six. I am sixty-eight. I've been a registered pharmacist for forty-five years, and I need help. I would like to apply for a grant. Mayor Stolzmann said today that there are monies coming into the city. Where is that money going to go? I need a grant. I want to rebuild my house. We remodeled our home a few years ago to what we wanted. It was beautiful. And we told everybody, this is the house we are going to die in. We were the first owners of our home on Arapahoe Circle, the second home built. I do not want to be forced out by people from California wanting to buy my lot and putting up million-dollar homes. I want a modest home for my husband and I and our dog to live in, and I need your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any other public comment, I'll take it back to council discussion. And I just want to take a minute to recognize, you know, KT's comments. And I wish we had already set up a program where we had a resiliency fund that we could just say here is where the money is. And unfortunately, we don't yet. And so, that, when you heard Congressman DeGussa earlier tonight say CDBGDR, and that sounded really fast and confusing, that stands for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. And the last two letters you'll hear us say are IA on that sometimes, Individual Assistance. That is grant funding that we are working on getting so we can make a grant program for you too. And I'm going to keep working on that every single day. I know every council member on here, when they're talking to other folks, they're going to be working on that. And I know hearing we're working on something is not enough. And so, I apologize for that. And as soon as we can get you more specific details of exactly what grants are available, what rebates are available, we will. What we're here talking about tonight is landmarking and preserving property because we have a dedicated tax that the voters passed into law that is for providing funds to people who landmark their homes that were built before nineteen fifty. And so, we have this pool of funding that can only be used for that purpose. It has to be used for preservation of historic properties in town. And people are able to follow specific criteria to landmark, and if they do that, then we provide them incentives. So, I am totally committed. I know the council is totally committed to continue to work on developing similar grant programs. And I know you won't believe it until you see it, and I understand why. And so, I just want you to know that we're committed to keep working on that. And just setting that aside, this application meets our requirements for landmarking. I'm grateful for folks who do come forward and landmark because with the price of property in town and with what some people will do, they would just want to maximize the return on investment on a lot. And these homeowners are deciding instead to preserve the home that's there and potentially have some financial risk associated with that. So, we're in a really hard time, and I thank, I thank the public comments for coming through and understand why, until we can actually show you the program that's for your family. You won't believe it. But I just want you to know that I'm going to keep working on it till we can show it to you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your comments. I think that was really, was really wonderful. I think you put it really well. KT, we feel for you. And it is hard to watch a system that's set up to support someone. And I hear your feeling that it's not set up to support you right now, and I think the mayor said it quite well. So, thank you, Mayor. I just was very impressed with your response and separating these issues. And I know this is something, I'm looking at Councilmember Fahy, who, you know, I served on the Historic Preservation Commission with. It's where we met, and I know how deeply she cares about historic preservation and also lost her home. And I'm sure she feels, in a lot of ways, the same as our last public commenter. And, yeah, I was just, I was taken aback by both the public comment, which crushed me, and the mayor's response, which was, I think, quite wonderful. And in the topic of this agenda item, I am really, as I was at the last house, excited to preserve a historic home and excited to partner with a local resident who is excited about the preservation of their home and foregoing the profits of demolition and new build to maintain some piece of our community. And I know that is embedded in what we're trying to do as a whole community with the five hundred and fifty homes we lost is, how do we keep that presence of who we are as a community as we rebuild? And it's funny, it's interesting how all of this is so intertwined in that we can all care deeply about lots of things at all at the same time. And it doesn't have to be this, that, or the other. So, thank you to everyone. This is super emotional. Everything we do is emotional. So, I appreciate, yeah, being a part of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Any other council comments on this topic? So, on this type of agenda item, when we have multiple things, we need to take up the landmarking and the grant funding as two separate resolutions. If someone's ready to make a motion, Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Ten, Series 2022, Resolution Designating the Monsoni House located at eight forty-one Jefferson Avenue as an historic landmark.
Thank you. Is there a second, Councilmember Fahy?
Second.
And did anyone want to make any comments on the motion?
I will just reiterate what you and Councilwoman Dickinson have both said, that it is unfortunate that we don't have this kind of funding for the fire victims. I would love it if we did personally, but I'm really happy that we have this for the historic structures and that someone is willing to step up and landmark their home so that it isn't torn down and replaced by a mini mansion, I guess is the term that's going around now. So, I really am very interested in preserving the historic character of the downtown area.
Seeing no other comments, all those in favor in approving Resolution Number Ten, Designating the Home a Landmark, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number Eleven? Councilmember Dickinson?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Any discussion in the motion? City Clerk Smith, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next order of business this evening, which is ordinance number eighteen twenty-one, Series 2021, An Ordinance Approving a Tenth Amendment to the Centennial Valley General Development Plan to Allow a Private School Use at One Six Eight Centennial Parkway. This is our second reading and public hearing is advertised in the Daily Camera on the sixth of February, 2022. I'll open the public hearing and ask if there are any disclosures or conflicts of interest. Seeing that, I'll turn it over to Lisa Ritchie, our planner. Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I will pull up a presentation here for you. There we go. Can you all see my screen okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. So, yeah, as you mentioned, tonight, we're here to consider the Tenth Amendment to the Centennial Valley GDP. This is going to be approved via ordinance eighteen twenty-one, Series 2021. Should you all find that it meets the approval criteria and public notice was met for the municipal code requirements. For a little bit of context tonight, while the Centennial Valley GDP covers a really large geographic area, the subject property tonight is addressed as One Sixty-Eight Centennial Parkway, and it is outlined in red. So, it fronts Centennial Parkway and it's west of McCaslin. So, the property, subject property, is a little over four acres. It's zoned, planned community zone district as part of the Centennial Valley GDP. The most recent amendments for this GDP occurred back in 2015, where there were some amendments to change land uses. In 2016, this property received approval of a planned unit development, which authorized construction of roughly sixty thousand square-foot building that's approved for research and office uses. This proposal does not affect any of the site design or any of the PUD that is in place, and the building is currently constructed. It does have a few vacant tenant spots within the building, and this particular applicant would fill one of the tenant spaces. I should note that the application was made by Cobal and Company representatives on behalf of Fusion Academy. And so, it's a little bit of a joint application there. And so, looking at the PUD here, you see the area for where the proposed school would be located is outlined in red. So, just for a little bit more orientation here, Centennial Parkway is shown just slightly off of this graphic on the top of the screen. And so, this particular space is located at the rear of the building. And again, as noted, this would be a general development plan amendment to allow a private school use for the property at One Sixty-Eight Centennial Parkway. The GDP would create a new parcel G three, which keeps the research and office uses in place and adds private school as a use. Again, Cobal Company made the application in anticipation of a tenant, Fusion Academy, in part of the existing building. Additionally, on the GDP, we're adding a few cleanup items, just for clarity. There were some inconsistencies in the way that 2015 approval was recorded, 2015 approvals were recorded. So, we're making some changes to that, as well as reflecting the approval in 2019 to parcel O. And then, there are some specifics, you know, related to how this tenant operates. It's really a non-traditional school, things like that. But the GDP really would authorize any private school. So, just for a little bit more background, from a procedural perspective, you know, typically, private school uses are contemplated as a use through SRU in the majority of our zone districts. However, in this case, because it is regulated via a GDP and private school use is not allowed in this zone district, it does need to go through a GDP amendment to establish this as a use. In this specific application, I guess we'll get to that here in a minute. But we are balancing, I guess, the specifics of this application with the general implications of a private school use. And so, when we look at that, we were evaluating all of the codes and policies that we have in place when we factor in if this is an appropriate use for this location. So, we did note that it, again, complies with seventeen seventy-two, the criteria for an amendment to a general development plan. We also verified applicable buffers for restricted land uses, which I'll go through in a minute, a little bit more in detail at the request of Councilmember Maloney. Staff finds it meets the provisions in the comprehensive plan, as well as provisions in the CDDSG. We can go through those in more detail if you'd like. So, Councilmember Maloney asked a couple of questions. We did evaluate if this school was currently in conflict with any of our restricted land uses, and it is not. But adding this private school use would effectively remove allowances for additional restricted land uses in the future by adding it in this location. And so, as you can see, this is a thousand-foot buffer, and a thousand-foot buffer is our buffer for marijuana-related stores. And so, this essentially, there are no stores located within this area. And for a little bit of context here, this is McCaslin. So, the shopping center up here is where Lamar's Donuts is. Down here is where Dickie's Barbecue is down in Century. So, little context there. And then, liquor stores are currently regulated to roughly five hundred, or it's not roughly, to a five-hundred-foot buffer. And so, this yellow circle shows, again, the five-hundred-foot buffer. There's no stores located within that radius at this point. But just know that that could come into play in the future as a restriction on future applications if the school use is authorized. With that, we are recommending approval of this ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, as well as the operator representative from Fusion Academy is on the call tonight if you have any questions about the specifics on that.
Thank you very much. And so, I'll turn it over to public comment. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment on this application this evening? And then, I'll take it back over for council questions and comments. Any council questions or comments? Councilmember Fahy?
I have one question on the alcohol radius. Does that, is that only for liquor stores? Or does that include, like, restaurants like Sabre or something that sells alcohol?
My understanding is that is for liquor stores. I would also lean on City Clerk Smith to clarify if I'm incorrect on that.
Okay, thank you.
I believe Anna Ritchie is correct. It's only for liquor stores. It's not for restaurants.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a GDP amendment, but as part of the, as part of the proposal, is there a proposal in terms of the change of ownership of the building?
No. So, No. So the entities represented by Cobble would still retain ownership. Fusion Academy would be a tenant of the property, and I would confirm that though through Mr. Vasek, who is the representative for Fusion before I state a certainty.
Hi, yes, Brett Vasek on behalf of Fusion Education Group, corporate group for Fusion Academy. We have entered into a lease for roughly 10,000 rentable square feet on the ground floor of the building. So landlord stays the same, obviously existing building, no exterior changes, all just tenant build out. As soon as hopefully this goes through, we'll be granted our building permit and looking forward to start construction.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, that takes us back to our final round of public comments on this agenda topic. Any members of the public care to comment on this topic tonight? Seeing none, that takes us back over for council comments or motions. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Deb had her hand up first.
Councilmember Fagin?
Okay, I'll move to approve ordinance number 1821, series 2021, an ordinance approving a 10th amendment to the Centennial Valley GDP, plan to allow a private school use at 168 Centennial Parkway on second reading.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion this evening? Seeing none, I'll just say I find the staff did a great job. I want to thank them for looking at the analysis and comparing it to our general development plan criteria. I know they did, you know, a lot of work getting this done and this had a bit of a delay. And so thank, I want to thank the applicant for sticking with us through the delay and thank you. And seeing no other comments, I will close the public hearing and I'll ask City Clerk Muse for a roll call vote on the motion.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Fagin?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion is approved. And that takes us to our next order of business this evening, which is the Foundry General Development Plan and Subdivision Agreement. We have two parts to this. First, we have ordinance number 1815, series 2021, an amendment, I'm sorry, an ordinance approving a seventh amendment to the Dakota General Development Plan to allow up to 59 dwelling units and 20,000 square feet of commercial development. This is our second reading and public hearing as advertised in the Daily Camera on the 6th of February 2022. And second, we'll be taking up sort of concurrently as a package resolution, number 12, series 2022, a resolution approving a second amendment to the Foundry Subdivision Agreement to reduce the requirement for occupancy by persons 55 years of age and older from 24 dwelling units to 12 dwelling units. I'll open the public hearing and ask council members if there are any disclosures. I see a couple hands. Councilmember Most?
I don't have a disclosure. I'm just wondering if we can take our break a few minutes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Dive into this because I think this probably is going to take some time.
Thank you very much for pointing out the time to me. I was just going on with the flow. So we normally take a break at eight o'clock, but it's a great point from Councilmember Most that if we take our break now, we won't break up this hearing in any way. So we will go ahead at 7:53. We'll take a break until 8:03 and then we'll get started on this agenda topic. Thank you, everyone. We'll be right back. All right, two, three, four, five, six. We're waiting on one. All right. Thank you, everyone. Welcome back to our council meeting. And so just as a reminder, we are now taking up agenda item F on our agenda, the Foundry General Development Plan and Subdivision Agreement. First, we'll take up ordinance number 1815, series 2021. And that is the ordinance approving a seventh amendment to the Dakota General Development Plan, which would allow up to 59 dwelling units and 20,000 square feet of commercial development. This is our second reading and public hearing. And then second, we'll be taking up resolution number 12, series 2022, a resolution approving a second amendment to the Foundry Subdivision Agreement to reduce the requirement for occupancy by persons 55 years of age and older from 24 dwelling units to 12 dwelling units. I'll open the public hearing and ask council members if there are any disclosures or conflicts of interest. Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Lisa Ritchie, our senior planner. Hi, Lisa.
Good evening again, Mayor, City Council. Give me a moment here. I will share my screen. All right. Takes a sec to get going here. Okay. All right. So as mentioned tonight, we're here to consider the seventh amendment to the Dakota General Development Plan and the second amendment to the Foundry Subdivision Agreement. This application did meet all public notice requirements in our municipal code. This was before fairly recently, so I will be going through this probably more quickly than the normal. But I do have the old slides kind of waiting in the wings. If there's any information that I don't present here tonight, I'm happy to pull that up just to let you know that before we dive in here. So for a little bit of context, the site is located up on the northeast side of the city, adjacent with the city of Lafayette. Bordering to the north is Pascal Drive and then Highway 42 to the east. It's located within what we commonly refer to as the Steel Ranch neighborhood, although it's part of what the Dakota General Development Plan. Little background here, the property is roughly just shy of six acres. It's zone planned community zone district along with the more larger area that's included within the Dakota General Development Plan. For this particular property, there was a general development plan amendment and the Foundry PUD in Platte that was approved in 2016. That authorized construction of roughly 32,000 square feet of commercial, 32 dwelling units with 24 of them required for occupancy by persons 55 years of age and older. As well, it has, it had a concurrency requirement to build the commercial with the residential. In 2019, the previous owner applied to extend the PUD. That was granted until April of 2020. And along, they also, along with that, they requested a reduction in the concurrency requirement to only require one of the two commercial buildings to be constructed so that reduced the minimum amount of commercial on the site to roughly 14,000 square feet. I mean, so you all heard this application most recently on October 5th. And so since that time, the applicant has increased the allowance for commercial development from 15,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet. So the maximum allowed of commercial development is 20,000 square feet. Noting though, that the concurrency requirement still remains at 15,000. So the minimum commercial that could be developed on the site is 15,000 square feet, but it could go up to 20,000 square feet. They did add back in the requirement for a minimum number of units for occupancy by 55, or persons 55 years of age or older. So the current application requires 12 of the 59 units to be occupied by persons 55 years of age or older, whereas the current application, the current PUD requires 24. So I just want to acknowledge that they added that back in at the request and feedback from City Council. So on this slide, I have kind of all of the history of all of the actions for that. I see a hand up, Councilmember Dickinson. Do you want, Mayor, do you want to stop now or?
Sorry, I just want to clear, I just want a clarification on the last slide from just a, you said they're going from the 55 years of age or older from 24 to 12. You said they're going from 12 to 24, so I'm just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah. So no, my apologies if I misspoke on that. So the current, well, the PUD that the previous owner had applied for required occupancy of 24 of the units, this applicant has reduced the request down to 12.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Sorry for the confusion there. I won't go through all of these. Just noting that this application has been through a number of public hearings at this point. Following City Council, again, City Council considered this on October 5th. You all voted to remand this back to Planning Commission and the feedback shared primarily was over the loss of the requirement for the senior living and again, concern over loss for commercial development along the corridor. November 11th, Planning Commission reconsidered the application. The applicant took the same application that's before you tonight to Planning Commission. Planning Commission, though, continued to not express the findings that the senior living requirement is critical for this. And so they actually voted to add a condition to remove the senior occupancy requirement. So after much discussion, and that was included in your packet. The applicant, though, did elect to keep that in their application. So in response to City Council's feedback. So just wanted So just want to be clear on that, Planning Commission voted to remove that condition, the applicant did keep it in. But there is a lot of discussion in the Planning Commission record over their rationale for voting to remove that requirement. So when staff looked at the application, primarily, we reviewed this against a comprehensive plan. And that there should be a mix of housing types, pricing to meet changing economic, social, multi-generational needs. I'm not going to go through all of these, but staff finds that this application, as submitted, meets the policies within the comprehensive plan as it relates to housing, particularly now with the added back in requirement for twelve of the units to be occupied by seniors, as well as coupling this in with the recently adopted inclusionary housing ordinance that this application is subject to. So just want to clarify that that requirement is also in effect for this application. One of the primary things that we looked at following the previous application was we reran the fiscal model to reevaluate a couple of things. One, just changing some of the dynamics around occupancies by seniors, as well as an increase in the overall maximum amount of commercial development. So I won't go into a lot of specifics. I also want to note, you know, a couple of major events have happened, you know, since the current adoption of the the current fiscal model. You know, one market changes happen all the time, and this model is a couple of years out of date. And we also don't know the impacts for Marshall Fire. So just want to acknowledge that there might be some elements in this fiscal model that haven't captured some of the most recent events. But generally, you can see the columns in white were what were presented on the previous application. The columns in yellow are what was added. And as you'd expect, the fiscal performance for the application goes up slightly due to the increase of commercial development in the maximum scenario, the high scenario from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand square feet. The low scenario essentially remains the same, just given that they don't have to build any more commercial than the fifteen thousand square feet that is required for the application. Happy to go into more detail on this.
Councilmember Most.
Yeah, sorry, I'm I'm confused. First of all, what's the value of these numbers? There's no indication on this chart.
Oh, good question, yes, sorry, ten thousands.
Okay, so the first number never left, Connor, two, four, four, five, that's two million four hundred and forty five thousand?
That is correct. If I am incorrect, I'm going to lean on Director.
Two million four hundred and forty five thousand.
All right, so it's a hundred, these are, this is a hundred thousand?
Just, just thousands.
Okay, thousands, sorry, right, three zeros, thank you. Okay, so that I want to check. And then just again, the, on the left, we're looking just at this particular project. At the right, we're looking at the entire development?
That is correct. So the columns, the columns kind of increase in intensity. So the three right columns, excuse me, the three left columns, current foundry, the August application, and then the the current one now are just really the property alone, specifically of the fiscal performance on this property. And then the the right three columns where it includes the word Dakota, that is the fiscal performance of the entire Dakota General Development Plan. And and that's really difficult to capture after the fact. I just want to be clear on that. You know, we had to go back and and pull some estimates for cost of construction at the time. And so I think the more, you know, we're looking at the range of years here where this development got built out. I would say, you know, these numbers are are harder to track and harder to quantify. But just acknowledging that collectively, the general development plan, really in every scenario, given the current approvals, is not fiscally positive, right?
And when, when this, when this initially was, when the initial PUD for total Dakota was approved, was it net positive then?
For the PUD within the total Dakota development, I don't believe it would be just due to the number of residential units at the time. But I want to acknowledge that the current GDP allows up to seventy six thousand square feet of commercial. This would, you know, allow up to twenty thousand square feet. But again, there's been different iterations of the fiscal model. And so, you know, it's hard to quantify what those numbers would have looked like back then, when this got approved, given how we run our fiscal model today.
Right, because, well, right, I'm just saying that that my understanding is that we're looking for a net fiscal positive impact or not, at least a neutral impact. So, um, so again, this has to do with the fact, this is, this is given where we are today versus what would have been proposed with a lot more commercial.
I think that's, I think that's a good summary.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I see Director Zakara has his hand up, I'm not sure if there's more clarification at this point.
At the, if you feel that it would be helpful, Director Zakara, go ahead.
Sorry, um, so I I just wanted to add, yeah, I don't know if it'll be helpful, Mayor, but I I wanted to add some context and history, because this, there was an extension on the PUD several years ago, before, you know, some were on council. And the the reason we have so many scenarios is because of some of the discussion that took place at council when there was an extension to the previous PUD. So I wanted to provide that history and context. I also wanted to mention that with these fiscal impact models, we've had a lot of policy discussions over the years while I've been at the city about how we run these and what about high-low scenarios? And that, you know, that we typically try to have some standardization of our assumptions. And what makes this one so tricky is that there was a a master plan, a general development plan for this many, many years ago. And there was an assumption that this parcel would be the commercial hub. And I think there was a lot of discussion on council about how this commercial hub would provide fiscal balance for the larger residential development. That has morphed over time. We did fiscal modeling very different when the original plan was developed. But because of council's questions about, well, we shouldn't be looking at this just within the foundry parcel. We should be looking at this in the context of the entire GDP, the master planned area. So this was kind of our attempt as staff to use our current fiscal model to provide some context with lots of different variations and scenarios, and it's become very confusing. But I wanted to provide the context for those who weren't around, you know, originally with the original GDP or at least with the last PUD or extension that happened for the foundry, where council very much wanted to understand, how does this fiscally interact with the entire, you know, larger Dakota development, not just this parcel of development? So I don't know if I helped anything there, but thank you for letting me speak and trying to provide some clarification and context.
Very helpful, thank you, Director Zakara.
Thank you very much, sorry, let me get back on this one, so, okay. So with that, I'm not going to go into any more detail, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you have. And I just want to say for our recommendation here, knowing, you know, City Council had a lot of discussion around this, that we just acknowledged that if council finds the application meets the applicable policies and codes, that we do have an ordinance and resolution in the packet that would approve the application. If City Council finds the applicable policies and codes have not been met, we would request that you would direct us to bring back findings for a resolution of denial or ordinance for denial for this application. Again, and then the applicant is here for any questions. I don't believe he has a presentation tonight either, I think just in the, but happy to share anymore with you as well.
Thank you, thank you very much, Lisa, I have a question before we go to the applicant presentation. Could you please put up the concurrency requirement? You know, I saw it on the plan, but I think it would be helpful to look at the language of it, if that's possible.
Yes, give me one moment here while I pull that up, I can zoom in on my screen.
Thank you.
Yeah. Scroll to it here. Essentially, it's some sixty percent of the dwelling units with fifty percent of the commercial, let me find it here, I just need to zoom in. And then following forty percent of the.
But not the total commercial, right, just some portion of the commercial. So that's why I want to see it written out and talk.
Sure, let me zoom in here. All right, so you should be able to see, it's this note number six here, and this is on the GDP itself. And so basically, no more than sixty percent of the residential building permits would be issued without current concurrent issuance of building permits for fifty percent, seventy five hundred square feet of the minimum commercial amount. And then the final forty percent of residential building permits would be issued concurrent with the building permit for the remaining minimum seventy five hundred square feet of commercial development. The GDP would authorize an additional five thousand square feet, but there'd be no concurrency requirement to get up to twenty thousand square feet. But essentially, it's, so that answers your question, Mayor.
Well, so I have a few questions. Thank you for pulling that up, I think it helps to be able to look at it. So does this require any space be left for that additional five thousand square feet? Or could the entire lot be taken up without any additional ability to get to that twenty thousand? I mean, a concurrency requirement gets you to the minimum, but does it leave you any room to ever get there?
Actually, I mean, I think that's more of a question when we get to the PUD timeframe, if the applicant, when they are going through their site design, my understanding is, is there's, you know, there's definitely capacity on the site, but really, I think we would probably know this question at PUD and possibly could come in and add an additional lot later. But it wouldn't require that we would leave additional space for that. I can ask the applicant to clarify further.
I I have a few more questions for you, Lisa, so thank you for that. So on the on the affordable housing, I've I've made it clear at previous hearings that my preference would be to have the housing actually built in the community. But I just wonder, you know, there are options that are afforded an applicant. So how would the affordable housing be impacted by this concurrency requirement, if at all? Would all of the, if if it were to be, say, paid a fee in lieu, would all of that be paid upfront regardless of the concurrency requirement? Or would that be paid in two phases with the concurrency requirement?
That's a good question. I would, I would imagine, you know, for one, we've structured those agreements during Platte and PUD. And so I think City Council could consider, you know, given the phasing of the development at the time, if the applicant comes in with one Platte and PUD, that that would all come in at the same time. If they pull this apart into multiple Platte and PUDs, then potentially that phases in, given the number of residential dwelling units, the twelve percent that's associated with it. So that would be my, that would be how we, I would imagine we would structure that.
And that, thank you, Lisa. And then on the public improvements associated with this property, in previous hearings, we've talked about the sidewalk, that's the the sidewalk and grading and some other issues. Is there anything here in these requirements that would ensure that there would be grading and public improvements put in on the onset of the project? And that they wouldn't be delayed by some of these concurrency requirements?
Um, I am not aware that any of these concurrency requirements would delay any of the requirements. I mean, when we come in for Platte and PUD, you know, we would reevaluate all of the requirements, all of the current conditions. And I know that there's, you know, a requirement on the current PUD that requires the landscaping along the Highway forty two frontage. So when we enter that phase of this development, should it move forward here at GDP, we would work from that baseline assumption, but certainly everything, you know, gets kind of reevaluated, given current policies and and direction.
Okay, so I I'm not sure I understood the answer. So would, so let's say, I guess, I guess, whenever I see concurrency and looking at these things as like potential failure points, and you never want something to fail, but that's why you have a contract, is that there are potential like places where things will go wrong, and you're expecting a checkpoint to ensure that what you wanted to happen happens. So if, you know, if the worst case scenario happens and you get through that first phase and there's not an ability to continue on financially, or who knows why things fail, right? Market conditions, maybe something else. Would there be public infrastructure that was built, like sidewalks, in that first phase of development?
There would be certainly public infrastructure associated with the first phase that would be built. And, you know, typically, when we order, when we structure our subdivision agreements, we don't grant any certificates of occupancy until whatever, you know, kind of the applicable public improvements are complete. The subdivision agreement, when we get to that point, would come before City Council. So City Council will certainly have the opportunity to weigh in on any concerns for that. And if, you know, normally, we require kind of the consistent amount of what's required for each phase of development. So if it does break out into multiple phases. But I think knowing from City Council if there's particular improvements that are important to get completed in entirety on day one, say, maybe forty two frontage, certainly you know, give us an indication of that now, but we're not, that's not part of the application today.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And and so just, th- this project, you know, is part of a larger project, it's having to be amendment, it has stalled out there, some issues. So that's where some of my questions are coming from, it's not totally out of nowhere. And so I have a question on on what you just said there around certificates of occupancy. So in the past, we've had homes sold to, you know, right now, there's two parties. There's a developer coming in to do this project, and there's the city. And we've had, you know, homes sold to people or buildings sold to tenants. And then they're very eager to get their certificate of occupancy, but the builder then leaves without having done the public improvement. So is there a way to ensure that, you know, buildings can't be conveyed to a third party until those public improvements are in? Or is there something that can be added to ensure, you know, that the sidewalk is built, that the streets are put in, that these finishes that are still missing can be, can be done? Not in a way, I mean, you want to be able to get them going and off the ground, and I understand there's financial challenges. So the timing of when the public improvements go in. But if this gets stalled at some other phase, because this law has been sliced and diced time and again in front of council and continues to, it continues to be, well, it's just that last little bit that's so challenging. And so I'm trying to understand how we can ensure that we're not just right back here again.
Well, I think city staff has learned a lot over the last few years administering some of these subdivision agreements, as things have, kind of, as market forces have shifted and owners have changed. And so we do, we have learned a lot, we have some lessons learned that really inform how we structure these agreements and our discussions with applicants when we get to this phase, as well as expectations. But at the end of the day, really, that is the point of the subdivision agreement, is to get the guarantee in place that should be, you know, we require the financial guarantee upfront that the public improvements are required. So that if the development stalls out for whatever reason, the city has the funds in place to go in and finish the public improvements, whether or not we elect to do so is a different policy discussion.
So we just, it's sort of this, so why can't, so why don't we have the public improvement funding for this already? Like, why can't we use that, if we have that, why can't we use the public improvement for this development that was previously approved and put in the sidewalk?
My understanding is that we never actually received the public improvement guarantee upfront when this plot was initially recorded.
Okay, thank you. And so it would just be done different, you're, so like, we've learned how to do it, we have different staff now, things have changed, and it would be a different process. We have a different applicant, we have a different landowner, all those things, so it would just be different than it was in the past. Is that right?
That's our intention, yes, that is, that would be our intention.
Oh, Councilmember Fink.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, Lisa. My question is kind of a continuation of the mayor's on the concurrency requirements. I'm wondering, at what point do the inclusionary and senior housing have to be included in what's constructed? I mean, can they do the whole first section without any? And then not end up putting it in the second half? Or because of going having financial issues or whatever? And then the other thing is, can they qualify one unit as? as inclusionary and senior?
Really good question. So all of this would get negotiated, or not negotiated, but all of this becomes effective and we would, we would work through this at plat and PUD. And so when there's a plat or PUD, whatever the, for the inclusionary housing component, whatever number of dwelling units come in with that particular plat or PUD, twelve percent of them are subject to the inclusionary housing ordinance. So if a future PUD splits this off into two phases, it would just be the pro rata share. And then that's a good question. If they had split off the split off the senior housing, how we would structure that in a pro rata share, or I would imagine city council through the subdivision agreement amendment that is before you tonight could add a condition that all of those come in at phase one. And then I don't have a legal answer for you as far as could these kind of count in both ways. I don't know that they couldn't both meet, you know, one unit could meet both the affordable requirements and the senior requirements and I don't know that we could restrict that, but I would, I would probably have to get some legal advice on that when we get to plat and PUD, or we could bring that back to you if that's a concern.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. Councilmember Bren.
Thanks, Mayor. Lisa, could you put the slide back up that talks about the, the differences between this and what we saw back in October? Real fast. The reason, I, I think, I just want to go and make sure that I understand exactly what the differences are here. Because I'm having, I'm kind of struggling with what the differences are.
Sure.
It seems like there is a, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like the, the applicant has added the potential for an additional five hundred, five thousand square feet of commercial. They may not build that. They're not required to. And then they have added twelve units of senior housing. Other than that, other than that, this is the same application that we saw.
You've summarized that correctly. Those are the changes. The additional five thousand square feet would be an option, but they, you know, did that just in response to the concern over a lack of commercial development, but the concurrency requirement remains the same at fifteen thousand. And then, yes, they've added in the requirement for twelve of the units to be occupied by persons fifty-five years of age or older. I think the applicant may be able to answer more questions or work with you on the number of units for the senior. So when you get to, that'd be a good question for for the applicant too, as far as the rationale for twelve and then any desire for more.
Gosh, I'm just really struggling because it just, it just seems like I'd really like to get rid of, I mean, neighbors have talked about the dirt pile. I don't think anybody particularly cares for that dirt pile, but it's, but it's just like we had concerns, we sent it back. Planning commission didn't seem like they listened very well. I mean, they actually took out something that was important to us. We're adding it, the applicant wisely, I think, put it, brought it back. But I don't, I don't see this as terribly responsive to some of the concerns that we had. And that's struggle, and I'm struggling with that, you know, anyway. That's just a aside. So thanks for your comments, Lisa.
Councilmember Most.
So I have serious concerns about this five thousand square feet that isn't concurrent, because I think it seems to me that history of this particular development in particular teaches us that if it's not concurrent, it doesn't exist. So I appreciate the applicant coming back with five thousand square feet more of retail, but from my perspective, it's not there. This project started out at over seventy thousand square feet of retail. They dropped it to thirty-one thousand. They dropped it to fourteen or fifteen. Like, to me, you know, I just that's problematic for me over time. I reviewed some of the planning commission meetings and previous meetings and comments made by the applicant as well as some planning commission folks and ju- just what I consider to be rather flippant, unfounded comments about the state of the market. Quote-unquote, big box retail is over. Big box retail is not over. Go to two eighty-seven, you'll see plenty of big box retail. Comments about the inability of the previous owner to attract commercial prospects without any commentary or evidence or data around what they actually did to do that and you know, any attempts that they made to market it. And, and my concern is that we look at these projects overall in terms of how they are going to be beneficial to the community and consistent with our overall GDP in the small area plans. And clearly that included a significant amount of retail in this location, which has been slowly chipped away. And my concern is that some of the justifications for doing that are not really based on any data that I can see. But comments made that aren't backed up. And so I have a concern about trying to set policy bake based on people making comments about what is and isn't possible without any data. So that's one thing. The other thing that I have a concern about, and I don't know, you know, again, maybe this is put in the cart before the horse, but multiple comments by the applicant about envisioning this as a neighborhood center, walkable access. You know, neighborhood services such as restaurants, coffee, ice cream shops, things like that. And again, maybe this is too early, but when I looked at the documentation that was attached to this proposal, what I saw was seven large spaces of fifteen thousand square feet, which is, I don't know, a little over two thousand square feet apart for those spaces. And I don't necessarily see how that's consistent in that kind of strip mall configuration with the intention around this to create that kind of neighborhood, those neighborhood services. So I have some concerns, concerns about that.
Councilmember Most. Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt your train of thought and you can keep going, but I, if we could stick to questions for just this part and then we can have a shot.
Asking questions. Alright, sorry. So I guess the kind of questions I have is particularly looking at that last section is, you know, what, what is the, is there something that's sort of hard and fast at this point about the size of the proposed retail spaces and how does that reflect sort of successful similar businesses that are technically in that neighborhood services? You know, around that concept, do we have any idea, you know, and is that, is that layout of those of the configure, is the configuration and the size basically consistent with providing those kind of neighborhood services? So that would be one question. And then the other question is, do we have any market data that has been presented over the last year that backs up the contentions about what is and isn't possible at this particular site in terms of retail or commercial?
Sure. So I just want, want to note that any of the layout plans that are included in packet either currently or previous layer conceptual, I can let the app question and answer time, but really those are, those are fairly conceptual. My understanding is already kind of reevaluating all of the site design and things like that if and if and when we get to plat and PUD. So I think those are just kind of representative images, and I don't think they reflect their intention. I'm not aware of any mark data specifically to this site other than I think the applicant's own analysis and the previous packets regarding vacancy for the corridor and vacancy in the surrounding area. You know, the most recent economic analysis that the city did was in twenty nineteen when we went through the parcel general development plan and we did kind of a whole citywide, particularly around the McCaslin corridor. I do see that, you know, Director Pierce is on the call. If she's aware of something more, you know, than I am, I could raise her hand to if there's something that I'm missing as far as economic analysis that the city has undertaken. I know that we've struggled, you know, I guess we've, we've seen vacancies along this corridor, along Alfalfa Road, you know, more specifically through, you know, when Hobby Lobby left and Alfalfa is currently vacant. So we see vacancies in existing buildings. I'll be, for example, it's taken a number of years, but that has retenanted or it's on its way to reading. And I know that they're actively working on this, so I'll probably just leave it at that unless there's more.
So, so those are, the, the reason I asked is those are large spaces. And so what I'm trying to understand is that can we do some apples to apples? Because if we are talking about neighborhood services such as restaurants, coffee shops and ice cream stores. To me, those are not Hobby Lobby, Alfalfa's and, you know, large retail spaces. And so I, I'm just wondering, you know, as we think about data and actually using that data in an effective way, are we looking at apples to apples? Or are we just saying, well, here's the volume of open retail spaces in the area without any real granulation, you know, granularity on how that would relate to what the applicant is suggesting. The kind of retail that would go in. So it sounds like that we really don't have anything that's, that's granular at that level.
Thank you, Councilmember Most. Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm interested in, in gathering more information during this process. I, I'd like to hear the presentation from the applicant. I, I'm also interested in the public comment as well. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of questions, a lot of concerns and, you know, I, I've been on council through a lot of these iterations and I share a lot of those. But I'd like to understand why we should think this is the right thing for the city of Louisville. And I'd like to hear the applicant talk to us about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. Nice segue. I don't see any other council member questions. And so we'll turn it over to Brian Bear if there's anything he'd like to tell us tonight.
Hi, good evening. Brian Bear, seven five five two North Eighty-third Street in Longmont. Thanks for your time tonight. I did not prepare a formal presentation as I've done in the past. Lisa really broke down the, the major changes that we've made over the last couple of meetings when we went back to planning commission. I'm really here to answer questions and help the discussion along. I would though like to just comment on some, some of the issues that were just raised on the, on the commercial side. And then maybe just refresh a little bit of information about the process that we've gone through with the community, the local, local community around the site in the neighborhood. We have done a fairly substantial analysis of the retail within a mile and a half of the site that we presented in the last meeting, and I think it's part of the package from our last presentation where we looked at all types of retail from the larger box down to the smaller retail. And that's all, of course, just changed with some of the market dynamics in the last, you know, short period of time, the last few months, but also with COVID in the last twenty-four months. But we just saw a real high level of, of vacancy pretty much across the board, not only with the big box, but with the smaller shops. And just to throw some stats out, I think product newer than two thousand, commercial retail newer than two thousand is about a forty percent vacancy. And about a fifty-one percent vacancy for the mile and a half ring around us of commercial. And then in addition to that, there's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand feet on the drawing board that's sort of in the works of parcels that around or near us that could get developed. We develop a fair amount of commercial and neighborhood serving retail, so we're pretty in tune with what that looks like and, and that type of a market. So we, we certainly look at that information and try to size up where the market is today, where we think it's going to be tomorrow and, and put that into our analysis. So happy to talk more about it, or we could dig up the slide that we showed, but I wanted to just talk a little bit about that. The other question about why we think this is the right product for this location. A lot of that's just our, our, the time we spent with the, with the local neighborhood groups. And, you know, we spent almost a, probably just a little bit less than a year, several meetings presenting concepts and ideas and, and working to get buy-in with the neighbors. And of course, not everybody you know, buys in, but we believe that we did some good work there, got a lot of really good feedback and responded to the community with multiple changes of the type of product. The, the concepts, it's always hard at this stage because, you know, we want to show people a concept, but we know that that really doesn't come till the PUD and the plating. But we tried to get out in front of that with some ideas and some concepts of both the commercial and the residential. And, but, you know, those things can change as we get into the PUD. And so to the comments about the retail and, and, you know, is it a strip center or is it broken up into five suites? A lot of that will work its way through the design process when we get into the PUD amendment. And we really identify the residential product and the commercial product and how they'll all work together. We've done a lot of mixed-use development, so we think we understand that. But there's always great feedback that we get from planning commission, council, staff and all the folks that are involved in the process as we go through it.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's an interesting part of this whole process that we're in is we, we want to know down to the countertops, you know, what you're, what you're planning. And at the same time, we're at a very high level here as to what the design is. And I think both, both things matter, right? Like, we really, as a community, we care deeply about what the finished product is going to be. And yet, the stage we're at isn't about that. So we're, we're sort of asking questions as a community, as a council, even maybe as staff that aren't required of you at this stage. So then you want to give answers to give a sense of what your plan is, and yet you're not held to that. And so, you know, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a big, it's a big complicated process where, you know, if you promised me something today but isn't part of the process, how do I know you're going to deliver that a year from now? At the same time, I still want the promise. So I'm curious about your process in the senior housing and in the affordable housing. And I think to maybe Councilmember Fahy's question. You know, one concern I would have is I'm just going to mess the numbers here for a second, fifty percent affordable housing or fifty percent senior housing. And so we're going to build the first fifty percent without any of it. But don't worry, the second half will be all of it. And so trying to understand, you know, what the what your plans are, what your hopes are, what the design is that brought you to come back to us with your current plan. And, you know, I know that there's a, a density is really good for affordable housing and, and taller buildings. But it's not great for senior housing. So again, to Councilmember Fahy's question, if you want affordable and senior, senior tends to like, like, you know, one story and affordable likes, you know, three stories. So do you have, what is your intention around finding that balance and bringing that forward? And, and again, I totally understand that some of this isn't really moment, but just kind of getting that idea and that concept out of what, what's your idea here? And why did you bring the, I guess, planning said, we don't need the senior housing. You said, we want to keep the senior housing. So if there's any more you want to say around what your intention is, that would be beneficial for me and I think for the.
Yeah, no, of course. And, you know, again, it's early stage, so. But so to your, to your second question, I'll address first, which was more about sort of height, density, all that kind of stuff. The, the small, the small area plan really sort of sets that tone. And I think, and we also heard it from the neighbors that you know, they really didn't want anything over two stories. So we're sort of working within that framework as we think about the different types of products that we want to, we want to bring to the table. So that, that gives you a pretty specific box to, to, to work from. And, and so pretty much all the things that we're proposing now, we're proposing as two-story. The, the commercial may be one story, but to the question that was raised earlier about, do you have the room for the additional commercial? We can go up another story. Plus, we have additional land to put that on because of the size of the site. So that, that sort of gives us gives us the marching orders for where we want to go with that, with density and height. In terms of the, of the affordable or the, the fifty-five plus, we prefer not to restrict the property at all. But we got feedback from our last council meeting that that was the direction that, that. But we got feedback from our last council meeting that, that was the direction that, that council wanted us to go. So we took that back to planning commission and then they, you know, we were sort of in a strange position, right? They were telling us, well, that we don't think that's necessary. And, and I was saying, well, I heard loud and clear from council that that's what they wanted. So we kept it in there. So for, so frankly, that's, that's why it's in there. And we think it can work. We, we, we think it could be, you know, we can turn it into a positive and just create, you know, more types of product there. So I, I'm, I'm okay with it. And we'd be prepared to go forward with that. On the affordable housing piece, I think you're asking about that. You know, that, my understanding is a fairly new ordinance on that or resolution on that is to afford affordable housing program. And so we would just, we, our plan is to follow that program and the different options that are afforded within that. And since I don't know what I'm building yet, because I don't really, that's the next phase, we would start to put more definition to that. But I will say that if there's a concern about front loading or back loading pieces of that, I mean, I'm open to, to putting some structure in there that gets people comfortable with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Did you have any more questions?
No, thank you, Mayor. That was it.
Thank you. And so that takes us to our public comment period. We'll have two public comment periods on this agenda topic. If any members of the public would care to comment in this first round, please raise your hand and tell us what you'd like to ask. First, we have Gary Larson. And please tell us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to tell us. Gary, you might be muted on your end.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. Sorry about that. My name is Gary Larson. I live at 2189 Park Lane, which is in the patio homes directly across from the lot that we're talking about where the foundry would go. Back in 2016, I worked with the original builder, RMCS, and on defining what would go into the prior PUD. I put together an organization of 11 different HOAs that are right along 95th Street here. We call it the 95th Quarter Coalition. That coalition was comprised of over 1,800 homes. When I, I was asked to get together, one of two people to get together with Mass Equities back in August of 2020. And I started interacting with the developer, Mr. Bear. After three meetings, I just, I told him I was not going to come back to any meetings because he was not listening to anything I had to say. And that what I had to say was based on, number one, I haven't gone through this with the prior iteration of the foundry, which is very popular, by the way, because of the restaurant, the main restaurant that was going to be there. Also, the senior housing that was going to go in, it was going to be in three-story buildings, but there were going to be elevators there. So it made it senior housing. The developer wanted to move on. His mind was already set. He said, go up the long mud checkout, South Main. It's something we just completed. He encouraged me to do that four times. I went up the next day. I was very depressed. I thought this is not what would fit on this lot, obviously, this type of building. This is not what would fit in Louisville. It looked like Soviet era housing, four stories high, five large buildings, very characteristic on the outside. In terms of senior housing, we have right adjacent, I call it the adjacent community to this lot. We have 38 patio homes, all single story. Behind us, we have on Summit View, we have 24 duplexes or paired homes. And all of you on city council have gotten a lot of letters from all of us in these 62 homes. Out of those 62 homes, because they're designed for senior living, we have one house over on Summit View that has young kids. Every other house is somewhere between 50s and 80s year old. Because it's all main floor master, main floor laundry, 30 inch wide doors. This is what makes senior housing. And I tried to point this out to the applicant. There was never any interest in pursuing senior housing. So we don't, nobody here was arguing for 55 plus. What we're arguing for is senior housing to be compatible with what we have here. Commercial, we'd love to have commercial all the way along 95th, and that's what the small area plan calls out. Views into the cities, buildings along Highway 42 primarily should be one story. That's on page 28. Mass Equity still envisions townhomes along 95th instead of what the SAP calls for, which is opportunities for shops, businesses and services on the corridor. That's what we'd like to see.
Thank you, Gary. Next, we have Bill Gilbert.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, thanks. I'm Bill Gilbert. My wife Kathy and I have lived in Steel Ranch for just under nine years. We see the dirt pile daily, but that's not really the crux of this. We've really followed this entire process for over a year. And before that too, just to make sure that it was the right development for our community. And so we've carefully reviewed this latest proposal, including the amendments. And we've got, I've got to say that I think Mass Equities has been very responsive to the community. I think they've been responsive to the city council. I think they've come up with a good mix of residential and commercial. I mean, how much vacant commercial do we have in the city already? So I think it's a good mix. Unbalanced, I think there's, this is an excellent plan. And we're requesting that the city council approve the plan as it's proposed in the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments on this first round of public comment, we'll go over to council member comments and questions. Any council member discussion? While people are thinking, I guess I have a few more questions for City Planner Richie. Lisa, can you, can you just, I'm just trying to wipe this slate clean because it's like we, it's like, you know, there's just too, too much history and baggage and like just trying to focus in on this. So what use group table or where in the packet can I find a use group table for the allowable uses that are being proposed tonight?
Sure. So I'm going to start with just double checking the GDP itself. And so the residential uses, you know, I was cutting out earlier. Sorry. Can I ask, am I still cutting out a little bit? If I will, if I am, my video off?
You're sometimes cutting out, but you're cutting out at a frequency in which I can still understand what you're saying.
Okay, I'm going to turn my video off and just see if that helps. My apologies for that. So the residential uses would be determined per the, the GDP. And then the commercial uses would be regulated for, under the code in 1772. And I'm pulling that up now. One second here. And I can share my screen or I can just describe it for you, but just want to. You got it. Shoot, hold on. Now I lost one thing. If there's another question, I'm happy to.
No, just on, on the use group table, I, I, you know, I think, I, I think a lot of the discussion of this property is this is supposed to sort of be an activated mixed use hub for the rest of the neighborhood. You can walk to lunch, you can go to dinner, maybe there's a wine bar, maybe that's where your kids go to preschool, maybe there's a yoga studio, whatever activities happen in this center. So I'm just trying to understand the uses that are allowed. Like, is it, is it actually going to be a church and a gas station and a car wash? Or I, I'm just trying to understand the use table and that will help me understand the financial table that you presented better so that I can understand the likelihood of different potential options.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. No, I'm going to share my screen. Really, this would be allowed any of the uses that are in 1772 and are commercial and office. And so it doesn't necessarily require restaurants or retail. It's really a mix of different uses that are shown here. And so when we modeled the fiscal analysis, we assumed of the 15,000 square feet, we assumed a third of this would come in at retail, a third at a service use, which isn't necessarily sales tax generating, and a third at an office use, again, not necessarily sales tax generating. So I think we were fairly conservative in our approach on the fiscal model, not assuming that all of this would be retail. But these would be generally the allowed uses. And then.
So Lisa, can you tell me what zone? I didn't mean to interrupt. Sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. So this would be the commercial planned community zone district 1772.
Okay.
It's different than. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, so if my recollection serves, like, you know, marijuana establishments are excluded from this zone district. And there are some other things excluded from this zone district that are not excluded in others on districts.
That's my understanding. It would just be subject to, you know, anything's allowed within 1772.
I guess I have a question for the applicant. I mean, everything you've presented, it doesn't seem like you have any plan to do like a gas station and a car wash like I've described or anything like that. But I mean, would you have any problem with adding some additional descriptions in the general development plan on the types of commercial uses? Since the square footage of commercial has dropped so significantly, so that it was just narrowed in on like, these are the types of commercial uses we're thinking about.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly open to that. I, I, I don't want to get too narrow. I mean, some things just don't work, right? We, we won't have drive-throughs. So that eliminates a big bucket of of what can be there. I don't think convenience and gases is, would, is even allowable here. You know, there's certain uses that just require a lot more land that we have and things like that. So you know, if there's a concern about certain uses, I'm, I'm definitely open to discussing that. But again, I, you know, this isn't going to be a challenging, and I've said this before, this is going to be a challenging commercial area. We want to target the neighborhood serving types of uses, but I also want to be flexible so that it can be a successful commercial development. So if there's, the answer is yes. If there's certain things you want restricted, I'm totally open to discussing that. But I, I would like to have some flexibility too, so that we can bring different types of uses there that, that want to be there and that fit with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I said earlier, I've been through a lot of these discussions and you know, you know, I, I look at the fiscal model that, that was been presented and, and I know the planning staff is, is careful around presenting that because it, it was done differently when this was first proposed and, and we started, you know, doing a lot of development in that area. But I think the fiscal model that's presented with this tells a story. And, you know, it tells a story that concerns me. And I'm trying to understand how that concern I have should, should guide a decision I make from here. So for example, you know, when this was initially, initially proposed, it was 76,000 of commercial. Now we're down to 15. We were talking about the residential in this foundry area of being 32, not 59. We were talking about senior housing being 24 and not 12. And, and the senior housing piece to me is, and I, you know, councillor later probably laughed because it's a word I maybe overused. But it's purposeful housing, you know, it's, it's housing that of a type we do need. And, and I know my neighborhood, and I know it's Steel Ranch, you know, my neighborhood. I'm one of the youngest ones in my neighborhood. So is that senior housing? That's not, doesn't get into senior housing. But, you know, looking at that and, and saying, we wanted to have purposeful housing, we would approve it to a certain level as long as there was concurrency with the commercial development made sense to me. And has this changed since it was initially proposed? Yes, obviously. What concerns me about this, and this is not just this particular area, is we get sold an idea that we're going to have all this commercial, and we're going to have some residential. And, you know, the fiscal model that, you know, staff presented us, I believe it's fairly accurate. Because the numbers of commercial is really where you make up for the losses on the residential side. I don't know. I'm, I'm just trying to get my arms around something that's very different than a path the way we initially started going down. And, you know, Brian, I appreciate your, your comments and thoughts around this. But do we do something that, you know, keeps making it more difficult on the city resources? You know, I know the first three fiscal models are kind of in the black. But if we did none of the residential, it would be more in the black, more in the black if we just did the commercial. So, you know, to me, it's a balance and we're making a decision on the backs of the rest of the residents. If we choose a direction that costs money for the city and, you know, at times we make those decisions when it's a policy decision that's in the best interest of the city. And senior housing, I think is in the best interest of the city. So that's where I'm at at this point in time. So I, I can't easily come down on, on any side of this. So I still want to explore this with my colleagues and, and the applicant and the public who has another chance for comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I think it's really good to have the historic knowledge. I mean, for me, you know, I'm looking at this, at this moment, not, not entirely in a silo. But I, I really appreciate Mayor Proton Maloney, your perception of, you know, it's like, hey, we wanted this, and we got this, and we got this, and we got this. And I'm looking at it as it is today as a dirt pile and trying to figure out like, how do we get something better than a dirt pile? And I think that's the concern, right? Is that like, well, is this the plan all along? Is to get us to a dirt pile that we then say, well, this is better than a dirt pile. And so I think, I think that's a valid concern. And I find myself kind of just looking at the moment and saying, well, I think this is a reasonable application. This is, you know, if, if there wasn't all of the history, what is happening today, the application today compared to the last application seems to be, you know, an adjustment to some, some things that we asked for. But I really do hear the, the frustration from people who've been on council for four, five, six, seven years that it's a slow death towards something that maybe was perceived as inevitable. And now here we are. So going from 15 to 15 or 15 to maybe 20, going from no senior housing to some senior housing, these, this moment feels positive for me, but I don't, as I, as I said, I don't carry the same baggage from the previous meetings and the previous iterations of this. And I, and I think both of those are valid, right? Both, both your, your experience and my experience are obviously both real. And I find myself wanting to evaluate it today based on what is there right now. And maybe that's the balance we have on council in the moment.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Lake.
Yeah. Mr. Bear, you, you know, you are fortunately or not on kind of the tail ends of something. When I was growing up, we used to have a bunch of kids and we had, we had electrified fences. And we put a kid on the end of our line of kids and somehow that kid got shocked a little bit more than the others. And I'm, it's probably not fair, but kind of was what it was. I, I don't mean to suggest that it's exactly like that here, but I mean, you know, we are in, and council, Mayor Portem and I are both in that place where we, and, and the mayor have seen this well down, a little down, a little bit. And, and I think each time it's been, you know, I mean, there's rationale for it, you know, and but we've, we've had discussions, more policy related discussions of, of saying, look, this is, you know, we, we're not going to keep, And, but we've, we've had discussions, more policy related discussions of, of saying, look, this is, you know, we, we're not going to keep, we're not going to keep chipping away because somebody comes back and says, gee, we wanted to put a bunch of, of housing there. We wanted to do not a bunch of housing, but a bunch of commercial, but yeah. This is where we are. That said, I mean, so I, I share their concerns. That said, I mean, we've, we did have you here. And we did tell you, or at least I remember, I was just looking back at the notes while we were sitting here. We did ask you to, I think, increase the, the amount of commercial. And certainly to put back in the, the senior housing piece. And I, I think you did second. I'm like the rest of the, of folks who'd mentioned it, a little skeptical about, you know, so you raised the roof a little bit to 20,000, but we never know whether it's going to be done. It would be, certainly would have been nicer, I think, to have a, you know, concurrent concurrency at that, at that 20,000. But, you know, I'm also a little hesitant to continue to negotiate, you know, in the clinch. I think you did, we may not be exactly happy with what occurred at Planning Commission and then now. But you did do at least most of what we had asked for. And, you know, I, I don't know how much more we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do this. I, I don't like the process to keep sending stuff back. And, you know, I mean, at some point, you need, you need an answer from us. And, you know, I, I guess I'm, I'm just sharing these thoughts because I think although I'm not really happy with where we are, are, I'm probably not willing to, you know, give you that last shock. So that's kind of where, where I am right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Lake, and thank you for the visual for everyone. Councilmember Most.
I just think we have to do a lot better than get rid of the dirt pile. I just think that's too low a bar for this community. I believe that if you, you look at what is really, what works around, as I said, quoting from earlier, neighborhood services. Neighborhood services work. There's a lot of people that live over there. There's nothing to walk to. There's not a coffee shop. There's not an ice cream store. There's not, you know, there's Starbucks every 10 feet. And they do well because there's a lot of people who want to go to them. So I, I'm just concerned that, that this is sort of a, like, we're gonna, you know, go, oh, throw up our hands and go, well, this is taking a long time. And, you know, blah, 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 blah. And it just, you know, we just don't want this dirt pile there. And I just, I don't feel comfortable setting policy with that low a bar. I think there's a, that, that there's a certain level of fiscal responsibility that has, you know, that, 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 that we have. And there's an onus on the council not to just cave by attrition. And, you know, I, I think that, yeah, there's a lot of 2,000 square foot spaces around that aren't filled because it's hard to do that. But, I mean, if you look at what, what happens in our downtown, good luck trying to get a dinner reservation on Friday or Saturday night, or go get breakfast on the weekend, right? So there's demand for certain kinds of neighborhood services. And building that kind of, which I think is what, based on what the research I've done, looking back at this proposal, which was initially, this was sort of, this was envisioned as sort of a kind of neighborhood retail hub, where people would hang out and do the kind of things they hang, do downtown. And I, I just think that we're selling the community short. We're, we're, you know, we're not really standing up for, for what, for the vision that, that the people in, in this community have. And I hear the people saying, you know, who are kind of desperate to get something in there, I certainly understand why. I just think that, 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 you know, we can do better than that. There, there's a waiting list for people who want to have access to small retail spaces downtown, you know? And so the question is, do we shrink this thing down so much that it isn't viable? You know, or do we, do we think about what we can do? And I, you know, we have, we have lots of business incentives that we offer to new businesses in town. There's lots of, you know, there's ways that I think that we can certainly leverage an opportunity in a neighborhood where there's hundreds and hundreds of houses to, to provide the kind of retail experiences that people do want to have. So I, I'm very uncomfortable with sort of this, you know, as I said, sort of this, you know, solution by attrition. That, that this seems to have happened at this site over, over a number of years.
Thank you, Councilmember Most. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to apologize to everyone for having to run upstairs in the dark and get my cord. I was running out of juice. The, I just keep struggling with this application. I just, I mean, I know, I know the Mayor Protem gave his opinion that he thought that the application had changed. I appreciate his, his opinion. I guess I don't see that it has changed that much. The senior housing piece is really important to me. I feel like they have made a concession. Is 12 units enough when we originally wanted 24? And we have such a need for senior housing to me, I just don't feel like that's enough. I'm, I, I feel like, you know, I can't, that's, that's one place that I really just can't budge on, you know? So that's just where I'm, that's where I'm at right now is, is I'm struggling with an application that just doesn't seem that different to me. One minor concession on behalf of the applicant. And, and it doesn't seem like enough to alleviate our initial concerns.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, I mean, I think the dirt pile comment that I made earlier that Councilor Most is, is referring to. The, the reality is we haven't done better than a pile of dirt for many, many years. And so the question is, how do we do better than a pile of dirt? Not, anything is better than a pile of dirt. Like, of course, not, we don't want to just do anything. But what we have there isn't going well and forcing, forcing their hand. It, we're, we're winning in that battle, right? We're, we're winning that battle right now. And what we have as a result of that win is a pile of dirt. And so I agree with Maxine in that what we want there is something that's vibrant, is something that's attractive, is something that people come to, is something that we can be proud of. And, and I think we all want some affordable housing, want some senior housing, want some business, we want small businesses, we want profit. We want all these things. This is the GDP. This is conceptual. This is commercial and residential. We, as a council, don't get to decide whether it's Paul's Coffee Shop version two, or whether it's, you know, our favorite restaurant. We don't get to decide or determine, we don't have the, the granular city planning opportunity to say, will you please put in the exact thing that I want? But 20,000 square feet of commercial should, with concurrency, bring us something that is better than the pile of dirt. And I agree that what we don't want to do, because this is going to be 50 years, we don't want something to come in here that we're all going to regret. We don't want something to be built that we're all going to look back and be like, oh, man, we did that wrong. But that's, that's not what I'm seeing at this moment. I'm seeing someone who's interested in developing this lot that was supposed to be developed and supposed to be commercial. And it has some commercial, it has some residential. But I'm not holding the current applicant responsible for the previous applicant shortcomings. We have a space that we want to have, be better than what it is. And so how do we get it better than what it is? And I do believe it is on us to have something better than a pile of dirt. And that's a low bar, but we better get over that bar. That if, if five years from now, we still have a pile of dirt, we didn't even get over that bar. So we have to do this, right? And I'm okay supporting the, the GDP concept of that we're going to have commercial and residential on this site. That, I think, is reasonable. The details are, are yet to come because we're not at that stage of the process. But, yeah, that's, I think, I think we need to figure out a way to move forward with this property.
Thank you. So I just will ask City Clerk Muse, and I apologize for this. I try to keep track of everything really well on my paper here. Have we taken a second round of public comment on this topic yet this evening, City Clerk Muse?
No, we have not.
Okay, so everybody's had a chance to talk on council. And so let's just take a pause for a second. And I see we, we have second comments in the queue, but let's take our second round of public comment on this. And then we will come back for council discussion. And just to give City Planner Richie a heads up, if you could please have the use, all the specific uses that are allowed ready for us to be able to see, that would be helpful when we come back. First in the queue, we have Jeff Gass.
Do you hear me now?
We can.
Jeffrey Gass, 784 Meadow Lock Lane, Meadow Lock Lane in Lewisville Steel Ranch. First of all, I'd like to thank all the city council members for all the work they've done with Marshall Fire. To reiterate Gary Larson's point, he answered his own question is why we don't even need an age restriction in the neighborhood. Between all the patio homes in Steel Ranch and the lanterns homes, he mentioned that there was only one family under the age of 50 living there. The applicant is proposed and willing to make 12 age restrictive of 55 and over, 55 and over. Just the design that he's shown us of patio homes that he will be building along Calix would alleviate the concerns of not having age appropriate residents because of the design of the homes that he's proposing to build. As to the question of creating a big box retail on Highway 42 versus Highway 287, a US highway, a big, a big box retail is not going to survive on Highway, State Road 42. And that certainly doesn't blend into the neighborhood feel in 2022 versus the original proposal. Way back in 2008, when the Dakota Master Association was originally done. We've gone through many different peaks and valleys of real estate and changes to plans over the years. Also, with 20,000, up to 20,000 square feet, the designs will be discussed at the next stage. Like Councilmember Dickinson mentioned, that all that is done at the next stage. Who's designed to say someone won't want to buy, rent 10,000 square feet to put something in there? Of, you know, some beautiful big restaurant of some nature. So in terms of everything's only going to be 2,000 square feet is a moot point at this particular time. Plus, there's plenty of empty space where Mud Rocks is, that that could be developed for a bigger space if someone is needed for that range. So I'm all in favor of this plan. Brian and Mass Equities has been very open and forthcoming. And with the neighborhood, he's listened to many of our concerns in terms of design of what the patio homes would blend into the Steel Ranch and the lanterns that they will be facing. So he has been very astute with all the designs you've gotten over the past year. And he's, I think he's way above and beyond being a developer that has listened to the community. Again, thanks for all your work you've done with this project, Marshall Fire, and everything you guys do on a daily basis for the city.
Thank you. Next we have RJ Harrington.
Thank you. RJ Harrington, 457 East Rain Tree Court, a little bit south of what is being proposed here. I feel mostly a tension myself, but a little bit amongst what I'm hearing council deliberate around between the GDP phase and hypothetically kicking the can down the road to the PUD phase, where we can dive into a lot more of the detail. And so to that point, I think that there has to be that understanding of the balance that the applicant is trying to strike. We have talked about some other GDPs in the past year or so that had a lot more focus, at least from the public's perspective. Written record's pretty strong, but verbal record tonight, not as strong. That had a lot more scrutiny. My bias, as you've heard me say in the years past, is for inadmissible bias fear. I believe that our recent catastrophe lends some credence to that bias. And yet, at this GDP phase, my bias would lead me to ask the applicant to say, I'm going to do this balance, commercial, residential, it's going to be this conceptual phase as where we are with GDP. But I'll commit to really raising the bar above a pile of dirt to make certain that anything that I propose that will be built on this site at the PUD phase, since we have to kick the can down the road to that phase. And because our comprehensive plan is rather dated, I, as an applicant, will commit to doing things that are forward looking and will not only suit my neighbors in Dakota, Steel Ranch, lanterns more narrowly, but more broadly, this community. And I will focus on building a subdivision as it goes to that PUD phase that is going to be resilient and make certain that should any kind of disaster strike this city in the future, this GDP that will lead to a PUD will be prepared to withstand those sorts of things and reduce this community's greenhouse gas emissions very broadly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Gary Larson. Gary, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Wonderful. Okay, first I'd like to point out, this will make everybody happy. Over the last couple of weeks, that dirt hill has made a great sledding hill. My three-year-old grandson, first time ever, I got on with him. We went down it. He lost all fright that he had going into it. And then he, he's a maniac now. I've even seen the kids in the family homes just to the west of us over there going down the backside of it, which is, if you're familiar at all with Vale, that would be like going from river ridge down into the trees. But anyway, one thing that I'm getting out of this meeting tonight with city council, and by the way, thank you for your time on this, as well as all the other challenges we have going on in the city right now, is that everybody is talking about a vision. We don't have a vision for that lot. It's been there six acres. It's been there forever, ever since they used to be able to see the teepees that set back. That was a boy scout camp or girl scout camp. That, that's where our patio homes are now. And I've been talking, and I came to that realization a little while back, that what was our vision as a community for it? So I've talked a lot with the neighbors in the 38 patio homes here and the 24 duplexes behind us in lanterns to try to come up with a vision. And the vision that we have now is Forest Park Plaza, which is up in Lafayette. Sorry to say, it's where the restaurant 95A is. And it's at the southeast corner of 95th and, and Arapahoe. If you walk through there, trees everywhere, unique little stores, a veterinary clinic, not, not boarding, but just a clinic. The, the restaurant 95A, which is a great restaurant to go to. And if you, if, if we could get something like that built on the six acres of commercial all along 95th that is inviting commercial, upscale commercial, a lot of trees, park once, and then walk to multiple stores, right? That's the magic for retail is to be able to get that kind of. Right? That's the magic for retail is to be able to get that kind of audience. And then back here on Calix, that I look right across the street to, there's enough room there to get seventeen duplexes similar to what's right behind us in the lanterns. So thirty-four residential units plus the sixty-two that we already have right here, and you've got a built-in market right there. And then, as I mentioned before, the eighteen hundred homes, we counted up how many homes in each of the eleven HOAs right along this corridor on Ninety-Fifth, and it's over eighteen hundred. So earlier, I believe Councilwoman Most was mentioning how many of her homes that is. Well, it's over eighteen hundred homes. This walkable tier. So that's what we need is a anchor restaurant with shops in an inviting area with residential right along Calix. Boom. Zero seconds left.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. I'm seeing no other public comment. We'll come back for our council discussion on this topic. So we're, you know, to the discussion phase, potential motions phase, and I'll just add in where I am at the moment. So we have this conversation every time we have a general development plan, and then we have a planned unit development about when the appropriate time to have a conversation is. And it's absolutely the appropriate time to talk about bulk enassing and use types that are on the property and the flow of traffic and whether there's adequate public infrastructure. And so those are, those are the types of things I've been focusing on. I, I have I have eight conditions of approval that I could add that I think would bring this together, but I just need to pause because I don't think it's our responsibility from the DAS to sit here and come up with an application and tell an applicant what they need to come back with. It's a matter of we've been presented with something. And at this point in time, it would take these eight amendments for me to be able to come around. If council wants to go there and we want to talk about all of these details, I mean, I think we can do that. But we don't even have in front of us uses. We don't have, I mean, the idea that we want twenty thousand square feet, we would need to change the concurrency requirement so that there's ten thousand and then ten thousand. We don't even really have a concurrency requirement the way this is written. It doesn't require completion of the commercial. It just requires pulling building permits on it before you start the next one. So there's a lot of work to be done. And I think it's, I actually think it's pretty doable. I actually think the applicant could do all these things and make this work, but I just am at a point at the moment where I just don't think it's appropriate for me to recraft this whole application from the DAS. This is why we remanded it to planning commission. And I'm just struggling. So if we get, if we want to go through and talk about potential conditions of approval, we can do that. But I think as it is, it's missing quite a lot of things to make it consistent with the zoning, with the approval for this area, with the criteria for the general development plan. So I'm just struggling with it as it is. And I think we have done ourselves a disservice in the past when we've tried to create an application for the applicant from the, from the DAS. But if it comes to that, I will participate. Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, I guess I have a number of things. One, I wanted to just address a point that Councilmember Brown raised before, when he expressed the concern about whether, whether twelve units of senior housing was enough. And that's an absolutely legitimate question. I think, remember that because of what we did on council, there's going to be eight additional units besides that for permanently affordable housing. So that, you know, there's, there's twenty that are serving a purposeful function. I need that would get you there. A purposeful function in, in so that I think is, I would say, you know, it's, it's a concession, but I think it's a, it's a good concession and it's I was one who raised this issue last time or hammered on it, and I, I'm satisfied with that. I think, second, I I'm concerned generally with our councils. Sometimes our sense of disappointment that we don't have something better than the applicant and the better than the applicant's proposal that happens to be in front of us. And, you know, the, the, the perfect is the enemy of the good. I think we should stop talking about the the pile of dirt because there is no electric fence on it. And as far as I'm concerned, if it doesn't have an electric fence on it, it's really not something that should be subject to the discussion tonight anyway. But seriously, the, I think, you know, we have a burden hand. We have a proposal that's, I think, reasonable. It's not it's not what any of us necessarily would want if we could craft it, but that's not where we're where we're at. We're going to have to go with, you know, at some level, and the mayor raises a point which I'll address in a minute. You know, we've got the proposal in front of us. And really, at some level, if it up or voted down. I think we have recently done some work on the DAS, more work than I really want to, or that really is good for our process. I think it drives I think it drives business people to drink that, that we should be, you know, we shouldn't have to do this. And I don't know that it's their fault, but the idea, I think, is it would be, I'd really like this to move forward. I also recognize that there may be some things that we could do to it which with the support or the agreement of the applicant, you know, might be a better deal for everybody. I'm uncomfortable doing this. I'm just going to say it, but what I, I, I'm willing, I think, Mayor, to to try this, not because I think it's the best policy, but because I want to get, I'd like to get this done. I, I do want to, I want to express appreciation for the applicants working with the community. There are times when there's a whole bunch of outrage or concern when we're in this process, even at the GDP scale or the GDP level. And that's not true here. There are people who oppose it. Reasonable people in the community there who oppose this. But, you know, I think Mr. Larson is a fairly tough customer when it comes to this. And when he represents that these guys have done pretty well by the community, I, I, you know, I actually appreciate that. And the same thing with, with Jeff Gass. So from that standpoint, I think it would be good. And just to frame things, I would propose, I'll even propose a condition. But I, and I don't know how to go through this if we're going to go through this, because I think it's important. You know, for the app, if the applicant says this, no, I want it up or down, I think we owe it to the applicant to do that. But if the applicant's willing to work with us a little bit, maybe we can get something done. So I'm going to assume that for just a minute. Somebody can make a, if somebody wants to make a substitute motion and just vote it up and down, then they will. But I'm going to move for passage of ordinance number eighteen fifteen series twenty twenty-one and ordinance approving Seventh Amendment to the Dakota General Development Plan GDP to allow up to fifty-nine dwelling units and twenty thousand square feet of commercial development. And I would add concurrents, not to fifteen thousand, but to twenty thousand. So that would be my
So Councilmember Lay just clarifying in that box where the concurrency requirement is where it has seven thousand five hundred and seven thousand five hundred. Would you switch that to ten and ten?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just didn't, I'm so sorry. I usually can recognize all of your voices.
Mayor, I said second.
Councilmember Dickinson second. Thank you. Councilmember Lay, did you want to say anything else to your?
I guess, you know, we've closed the hearing on this, so I, I don't the mayor's
Just to clarify, I haven't, just to clarify, I haven't closed the public hearing. We're done taking public comment, but if council members have questions for planner Richie, I haven't officially closed the public hearing. And I will wait till there's a time to vote, just in case there are additional pieces of evidence people ask for to be entered.
Fair enough. I would probably think it would be a good idea to ask the applicant, if I might, whether that would be acceptable.
Mr. Bear?
Yeah, no, first of all, I just want to say, great, great discussions here. I appreciate all the different, different, different angles on this, and I think it's really productive. You know, I guess it's hard, I guess, I'm not sure what, what, what we're talking about it. So if this is the only change that you're asking for to my plan, then that's one, that's one way for me to look at it. And so I don't know the process here of how that works. But if, if the, if the requirement would be, we'd have, we would include the additional five thousand in our bill to on the commercial. And that were the only thing that, that is going to change in our application, and then we can move on to, to the PUD. That's probably something we could agree to.
Councilmember Lay. Sorry?
I guess what I would say is, you know, maybe one way of doing this is to proceed if anybody else has any
Sure. Councilmember Lay, if you've done any comments on your, on your ordinance, we can, there are hands in the queue, so I can go to the next.
I understand. I was just suggesting a path, which would be to, for people to make friendly amendments if they want to, but you're
Perfect. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I would actually be interested to hear. So first of all, I appreciate Councilmember Lay's concurrents requirement. I think that's positive development. I would be interested to hear Mayor, any other you know, any other conditions that folks may be interested in entertaining to get us into a better place, to get folks, because I do think that we all want to move forward. I also think that we that, you know, that we owe it to the, to everyone involved in this process to try to come to some, some sort of decision. So you know, if, for those who are interested in particular conditions, I would be more than happy to, to listen.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, thanks to both Lay and Brown. I think those are your comments. The question for staff, I'm just, I'm going to read verbatim. If city council finds the application meets the applicable policies within the comprehensive plan, small area plan and code, then we should approve it. And if we don't think it does, then we shouldn't approve it. But that, that for me is not a staff recommendation. That is a well, what do you guys think? So I'm very curious as the, as the experts, as the paid professionals, as our full-time staff, do you feel that the application meets our policies? Like, how, how, how did staff evaluate this? And does it feel like they've met our standards? In your opinion, of course, we don't have to follow your recommendation, but I'm thrown off by that. We don't have a solid recommendation and I, I get it. I imagine it's, it's complicated and hard for you guys as well. But I'd like to understand if staff, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Planner Richie and Rob is welcome to respond as well, but I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just, I'd like to know how staff feels about the application because you're the experts.
No, I appreciate you asking the clarification because that language in that particular section of the staff report has changed from earlier iterations and is not how we have typically in the past few years written our staff recommendations. So the body of the report in the analysis section walks through staff's, staff's, and you know, and in particular, our findings as it relates to the criteria and as it relates to the policies in our advisory comprehensive plan and our small area plan, right, which really inform the direction for city council. That's, you know, is taken through public feedback and gets adopted as policy by city council and then informs future development. So staff's, the body of the report really lays out why staff in particular believes that it meets the requirements, but just given the level of, you know, concern at this last city council meeting when this came back forward. And then generally, I think just a little bit of a different approach with staff moving forward would be really to acknowledge at that point that you know, it is city council's ultimate decision on that. So I don't, we don't, we didn't do that to try and introduce confusion into any of it. It's really just, just trying to let you know that, that there's, you know, options for you if you find that it meets it as staff laid out in the report, or if you want to adopt additional findings. So does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I mean, it does and it doesn't, obviously. I think that, you know, I as a, I want to say that to the public, right, as a volunteer council person sort of, right, and then we get, we get a little bit of compensation. I lean heavily on the expertise of our staff to analyze the complexities of these proposals. I'm not a fire recovery expert. I am not a planning expert. I am not any of those expert roles. And so I do, I do lean on staff for, for recommendations that I can then disagree with or agree with. And I think Councilmember Brown's request for, well, you know, what are some, what are some things? And I mean, Mayor's alluded to it as well. What are some things that we need as a council to be behind this? That's all fine. I just, I find myself a little bit in this, like the mayor said, like, I don't want to, I don't want to plan from the DAS. I don't want to do the application from the DAS. But at the same time, I don't know if I hold the applicant responsible for that, right? I mean, they have an application. We can vote it up or down. Trying to understand everyone's sense around it, but I don't see red flags that are like, they're breaking the rules, we must say no. And I get from the body of your, of your thing, there aren't major rule breakings and we get to decide. And so I, I appreciate it. Thank you for the, for the, the extra attempt at it. I'll, I'll stop talking now and let my council members fill in.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. And so I, I really appreciate that lead. And so I think the, the truth of the matter is this obviously does not comply with our standards and codes. Like this obviously is not consistent with the comprehensive plan and the small area plan in this area. This obviously does not meet the underlying zoning of this area or the intent of the general development plan. So I think the struggle is that we're all trying really hard to make something work. I think it's abundantly clear that this does not meet our codes and requirements. So I disagree with the proposal that, you know, oh, there's no red flags. I mean, the small area plan calls for commercial all along Courtesy Road there. There's not. It calls for one story. There's not. It calls for commercial. It's not. I think it's abundantly obvious that it does not meet our requirements. And so what I think the problem is, is that we're all trying really hard to make something happen. And, and that's really hard to do from the DAS without redoing the comprehensive plan and without having a community conversation about what we want to see in this area. So I sort of disagree with your premise that there are no red flags. And I think the problem is that it's obviously not consistent with our rules and regulations and that we're trying really hard to make something work because we all really want this to be better than it is now. And, and so that's where, that's what I think the real trouble is with this application. And, and there's that it's just heartbreaking because it's like, we want to figure out how to make this better. We want to figure out how to make the entryway to the neighborhood in the city really, really nice. We want to figure out how to get some senior housing and affordable housing in the community. We want to figure out how to get a nice commercial place for the neighborhood to walk to like was originally envisioned. So I guess, I guess I find it frustrating in the opposite way than kind of how you laid it out. I think it obviously does not comply with our rules and regulations. And I'm just really struggling because it's like, I so badly want to be able to say like, yeah, let's figure out how to make something happen. Let's activate this space. Let's get it going. When the underlying issue is that we need to redo our small area When the underlying issue is that we need to redo our small area plan. And we need to, not the small area plan, but our comprehensive plan and have a discussion about the vision. But without that, it's not consistent with our plans. It's just, it's, it's obviously not consistent. The height, the uses, the layout, it's, it's not consistent. So I think that, I think that's where I'm really struggling. And so I have a number of things about completion, instead of building permits and number of square footage to make it better and a condition about the affordable upfront and a requirement for the sidewalk and the landscaping in case these guys go bankrupt. And then a requirement for the patio home, since we heard testimony that that's really important, maybe we should require it. Since there's nothing requiring it now, maybe we should eliminate drive-throughs and gas stations and hospitals and nonprofits and churches and colleges and schools, because none of those will generate any revenue. But to do all that from the dais and still have it not meet our requirements that are underlying the thing seems very heavy-handed. And so that's what I'm struggling with tonight is because it's like, I really want to make something work here. But that's so not our job. Our job tonight is to judge the application against the criteria that we have. And I think that's what we're all struggling with is that we want, we, we so all want to make this work. And it might just be that what we need to do is have a discussion about our comprehensive plan and have a visioning session for this area, so that we can reset and have a clear community path forward. I just, I'm really going to struggle with this decision tonight.
Yeah. Well, Mayor, I really appreciate your quite open dialogue there about where you, where you sit within, what your struggles are. That's really helpful for me.
Thanks, councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. I, I've also been struggling with this. As you've heard at various points tonight, I really want to make something work. I am also concerned that none of this complies with the plans that we have in place. And as much as we might want to, right, to, to make something work, we, we have to, we have to, that's part of this quasi judicial process is we have to apply the law, not make it in this particular case. And so we don't get just to just say like, well, wouldn't it be nice if we did something here? We have to say, does that thing that they want to do conform with our, with our small area plan? And if it doesn't, or our comprehensive plan, and if it doesn't, then we have to say no. So that sucks, in my opinion, right, for lack of better words. And I'm just, you know, that's why I think I was, I was hoping that we could, we could go through a process where we would put some specific conditions on it that would help, help it to conform to those particular, to, to those particular requirements of the comprehensive plan and the small area plan. Because I don't know how we as judges can, can really come to that finding. I, I would also say that I really appreciate staff's staff's, you know, approach to this particular memo, recognizing that they have findings. We may disagree with those findings. We are independent judges. And we can't just, we're not just rubber stamps of the staff findings and that we have to, we have to make our own decisions. So I appreciate that. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Most.
Sorry. I appreciate everyone's comments. I particularly appreciate councilmember Brown's comments. I also feel very strongly the way about this in terms of how we handle it relative to what Mayor Stalzmann said, which is, it's not our job to rewrite proposals from the dais. And I honestly, you know, I think it's really important that we respect the guiding documents that we have that we are obligated to consider and to reflect in the decisions that we make. That's our obligation. It's not our obligation to take aside in this, right? I mean, my understanding, and again, I'm new, is that this is a quasi judicial process. And the applicant represents themselves through their particular applications and communications with us. And the community is represented in these guiding documents. And the only way that we can effectively balance those interests is by being as faithful as we can to these guiding documents that are the product of our community. And that that expresses our community's desires and vision. So I think we have to, we have to use those and we have to, to, to have some clarity. And I would agree that I don't believe that these, that this proposal accurately reflects particularly what our community expressed as their vision and their desire in the small area plan. And I agree that our documents are dated and we desperately need to update them. But, but right now, that's the obligation we have is to measure this against that metric. And so I, I feel that it just falls far short of that metric.
There we go. Councilmember Lay.
I I guess I'm a little bit flummoxed. I, we, we do have disagreements on on the criteria. I don't know whether I, I guess I want to sort of play this back for just a second, because we, we had this, we could have voted it up or down and, and we had that discussion at our last consideration, and it was decided to send it back to the planning commi- commission. And they made, you know, the staff provided a presentation, I, if I'm remembering correctly, I think the applicant did too. And they approved it. And while councilmember Brown, you're absolutely correct that we are to be independent and make our own judgment. We're amassing a pretty unpredictable record in how we deal with applications. And I am very concerned about that. And so anyway, I, you know, we've got a motion on the table. I don't know whether there's any desire to try to do anything more. I, I recognize the limits of this that that may not be what people want to do. But you know, I'm certainly willing to entertain friendly amendments and you know, we can ask the applicant if he wants to do that. It sounds like there's a number of people who don't really think it's worth the, the effort. So but I, I do, I do worry about that level of discrepancy. And we, yes, it would be great for us to get to a comprehensive plan amendment and do that whole process. I got to tell you, I don't know when we're going to get to that. None of us do. Because of what we're facing in the community. And I just, I just don't think our process is particularly healthy right now, but I'm, I'm glad to entertain some friendly amendments.
I see the applicants hand up, but we're really not at the comment, open comment period. We're on council discussion. So thank you. And I see Mayor Protem Maloney, who hasn't had a chance to weigh in. And if there are other folks who haven't had a chance to weigh in that want to, this would be a good time. And then, you know, we can move to voting if there are no new comments from folks who haven't spoken. Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as you all know, I've, I've been all over this issue. You know, I do appreciate, you know, the comments by my fellow counselors who, you know, may feel like it doesn't meet some of the, the tenants of the comp plan or the small area plan or whatever. But are also expressing interest in, in somehow moving forward with something. You know, the, the, what staff laid out for us is we could approve it or we could not approve it. But give a pass forward. So that's what I'm interested in. If, if we don't approve this tonight, and I would suggest we take a vote. If it's not approved, then I think it's incumbent upon us to lay out what we would approve. I, I am, you know, I hate to complain about our process. But we remanded it back to planning commission, and it came back with, you know, you know, a recommendation of taking out direction that we had put on the applicant. So I don't know if we're in sync with the planning commission on these things. So it's my recommendation, we take a vote. If, if it's, you know, if it's yes, then it's yes. If it's no, then I think we should discuss what our next step is and how we move forward, because just like councilway said, it might be 2023 or 2024 before we get to a comp plan. And it is, do we want to hold up all development until we've gone through all those processes? I hesitate to agree with that statement. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on the motion to approve the ordinance?
All right, I'll make a substitute motion to give staff direction to bring back a resolution of denial. Not because we're not encouraged by getting something done on the site, but because it doesn't meet our current small area plan or comprehensive plan. Obviously, it doesn't meet the fiscal requirements in the comprehensive plan, but additionally, there are issues with height, use groups on the site, landscaping, there are community concerns about the types of housing that need to be addressed, including, including patio homes and including a condition for affordable housing to be made upfront and addressing the contingency requirements. There's also issues with transportation access to the site and the way that the height is faced throughout the property. There are some other problems with the use group tables that are incompatible with the surrounding area that need to be addressed. So those would be the finding types of things that I would ask staff to work on in the findings. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion of the substitute motion? Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, I, I, I counting votes, right? I, I have no idea which way this is headed, but I'm concerned that was, councilor Lay or Maloney now is casing, but maybe Lay that yeah, we're setting a precedent of we don't know what we want. And that's not an accusation against staff or against councilmembers specifically, but that, that this is a difficult process. It's just, it's a difficult process for an applicant to get to the end line. So we request things, they go back to planning, they do those things, planning approves it, they come to council, we say, nah, no. And so I don't know the, the path that an applicant takes. And then I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure Mary has some ideas on, on a better path it could have taken. But yeah, I just, I think that this would like to figure out, I guess I was, maybe I, I understand it's messy, but I guess I was hoping that we could try to piece together a path forward. And I know you had a lot of ideas to, to get there. And I know that's messy. And now it's 10 o'clock, but I think you know, denying this application really sets us back a long way. So I, I will not, I will not be supporting the substitute motion. But I, I would be still supporting amendments to the original motion if we, if we get there.
Councilmember Dickinson, do you mind if I ask you a question? I know that's not really the format of our.
Oh, that's great.
So I guess I would just, I wonder why it is put upon me to bring forward all of the proposed amendments to make this meet our criteria.
No, I think, I think that's fair. I think that what I heard from you was there are specific things that you need to see in order to get to a yes. And I think that's fair. And I, and I do understand that, yes, you, you are 100% allowed valid in saying, well, it, it didn't come with it, so I'm, I can't support it. I think that is absolutely fine. You know, you said you have eight things that you would propose. So that was just kind of my reaction is like, well, okay, well, maybe if those eight things get you to a yes, it's messy. I don't like it. But maybe it's better than the alternative of just saying no, and, and we send it back. So I don't think it's beholden on you. And I think, I think your vote is 100% valid. And I, I appreciate whatever, whatever road you need to take. Certainly no, and mostly there, just just feeling my own frustration that we can't seem to find path forward here with someone who seems relatively flexible. And again, maybe that's, that's certainly my opinion, right? Flexible and we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to get to a finish line, then we're going to kind of hit the reset button, which for me is just unfortunate. But yeah, no, I, I appreciate the direct question, Mayor, and I don't know if I really answered it, but, but I, I do understand that's problematic.
Councilmember Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I, I just would like to reiterate that, like, the criteria are, you have to meet the, the, the comprehensive plan. You don't meet the comprehensive plan and the small area plan, then we can't approve it, right? Like, if this were, I don't know, it's, it's because I think we think it's, it's, we don't just get to approve whatever developments we like, right? It's, it's, it's about like legal requirements. The legal requirement is you have to meet the plan, right? So if that's unpredictable, I think what's unpredictable about the process is that developers come to us with things they don't like about the comprehensive plan. And then somehow we think it's our job to, to ignore the parts of the plan that they don't like. Well, no, we don't get to do that. We have to, we have to apply them. You know, we can talk about the plans later, and that's perfectly valid. Let's do it. Right? Clearly, our sentiments have changed, but we can't just approve something that's basically against the law because we want to, right? That's, that's not how judges work, right? And that's what we're supposed to be in this case. So that's where I'm at. I mean, I can't, I would love to do something. I would love to try to find a way to get this, but I would also like an applicant to just submit something that is consistent with our plans, right? We've seen this a time and time again. And then somehow it's our fault, we're anti-business, whatever. No, the community has spoken, right? The community has said, these are our requirements. These are our values, right? And then our code says it has to be consistent with community values. Well, it's not. So that's it. That's, that's, that's the answer, guys. I'm sorry. So I have to vote no. Sorry.
Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, I, with respect, councilmember Brown, we have differing views about how to apply the criteria. And a number of those who have who have weighed in, in our process apply them differently than others of us on council and even on council. We disagree. I don't think, I don't think it's, it's not a black and white thing. I, I appreciate the mayor's saying it's very obvious, but I, I think we've got staff who are very sharp and read these documents too. And they're not sending us something that's obviously against the law, but we disagree. And the problem, I think, in the process is that it's a crapshoot for an applicant. Now, I know that there's a different, there's different view about that, but I, I think that that's the, that's the nub of the problem. It, you know, the fault is not in the stars. It's in our differing interpretations of the criteria that are there. So one of the things I, I did want to say about something Mayor Protem said is that from a procedural standpoint, I Say about something Mayor Protam said is that from a procedural standpoint, I don't think. I have a feeling I know which way this vote is going to go, but. If and when the vote, if the vote were to. Pass your, your, your substitute motion, Mayor. I, I don't think it's, I, I don't know that it's even proper for us to give. Guidance about what we would approve. I, I don't even know whether, I mean, if we, if we accept your motion, that's it. I mean, that. I, I think this also points up a darn good reason why we should have a sketch plan process. So we can have these discussions at their earliest stage, but that's, that's a separate issue right now too. And I guess. I think is our city attorney still on the line in, does she have a view as to whether we can? After, if we deny a motion, come back and explain. Because the other way we could do it is send it back to the planning commission again with direction. But that doesn't set, I mean, that's not the direction that the mayor has, has suggested, so.
We can, we can ask City Attorney Kelly to weigh in. I just would want to check in. Mayor Protam Maloney, are you looking for something more than what I laid out in the motion that I made? I tried to, I was actually trying to address Mayor Protam's, Maloney's point in the way that I made the motion, but I'm not sure I accomplished it or not.
Well, let me answer it this way. So, you know, I'm looking at the, the staff report, page four ninety-two of the whole packet. And it says, if council finds the application does not meet applicable policies and codes. Staff request council direct staff to bring back findings for denial. Well, those findings of denial. Would be the, what I'm, what I was trying to refer to. So we're articulating the reasons why we're not approving it. And, you know, that should give the applicant very clear reasons. And, you know, if they choose then to come back with an application, they would have that information. That's what I was saying. Because it sounds like everybody is interested in something happening. But from differing views and looking at, you know, whether or not it meets the comp plan or small area plan, but. We should articulate those. That's, that's basically what I'm saying. And I think that's what staff was trying to say in the direction they gave us.
City Attorney Kelly, did you want to weigh in?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think that the city council sends a message of what it will approve. In a lot of ways, starting with the comp plan and all the criteria for the type of application before it. So I don't have an issue with the city council voicing how. It, it believes that the application doesn't meet the criteria, and in fact, that'll be essential for the resolution of denial. If that's the direction that the council gives tonight. You know. Each of you may view the criteria differently, and that's why there are seven of you. So I think each of your opinions is very important for the applicant to, to hear and consider.
Councilmember Lay, did that address your question? Thank you. Councilmember Most.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate something that Councilmember Brown said earlier, which is that this. The proposal was sent back and it, it isn't substantively different than the original proposal that came to the city council. I also would like to remind Councilmember Lay that the. Constitution of this council is different than it was when this came up before, and that's part of the democratic process in our community. The city council is not static, and so when the council changes, then, then, you know. It, it's not a monolithic body and people change votes and all of us, you know, I mean. I haven't had that opportunity yet, but people have changed their votes on certain issues on the council. So. I, I think that, that, that it's, you know, the idea that. It's not consistent always, you know, may just be a. Product of the fact that that's the way this system works. I also want to say that I, I think that if we can't come up. If we can't agree on certain foundational. Components of our GDP and our small area plans, right? If we're making statements in those plans and we don't, that we can't find agreement on the council with what those are, then those are not effective plans. So either there's something wrong with the plans, the way they're articulated, or there's an issue with the way that, that. They seem to be interpreted. And I think, I think it's really important that, that the vision of this community. Is represented and that the city council, again. Use those documents as the voice of the community in these deliberations. And if they're dated and, you know, we may never get to them, whatever, I mean, those are, those are all fine statements, but that's not a legal argument. Right? We have a legal obligation to, to the best of our ability. Represent our constituents through those documents. So it just concerns me that, that, that in a desire to move our community forward. Which I think is a very important desire in a, in a, in a, in a effort to address. What, you know, a big pile of dirt, which you could call blight. I mean, it's just not, nobody's happy with the status quo, right? And so we all, I think, have a sense of urgency around moving beyond the status quo, but. We can't make up our own rules and guidelines to do that, right? And we, I, I, you know, I think the idea that we're just gonna, we're gonna stretch and stretch and stretch the rules. Out of a sense of urgency to do something is inconsistent with. The function of the selected body. And I think if we continue to send, to, to look to, to, to try to. Adjust these things and revise these proposals from. You know, during council meetings, I think that's an inappropriate exercise of our. Role in this quasi judicial process. I think that bends towards the applicant in a way that's unfair to, and, and, and in a way that does not. Does not allow us to really. Fairly exercise our quasi judicial role. And I think that it's important as a body when a proposal comes to the city council. And it is not consistent with the policies that this community has set. That we, it's okay for us to send a clear message and say no, because my sense is if. If we do that, rather than try to manage all of these processes from the council, we'll send a clear message. To applicants that this is, these are the expectations we have for applications that come before us. And I think the confusion we create is created by our engaging in this dynamic where we're like, okay, well, here's how it doesn't fit. And here's the six things amendments that you have to add to make it work. I, I don't think. From my perspective, that does not seem to be an appropriate role for council members.
And so I think everybody's had a chance, and so I'm going to go through people one more time if there are closing comments, folks want to make. Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's been a really good conversation tonight. I, I appreciate everyone's. Ability to keep really on, on task with the, with the topic and, and. It's legitimacy. I think the, the thing I'm taking issue with is this, like. Planning Commission approved this for two and staff brought it to us and our attorney is on the line. We might vote right now for three to approve this. If it's illegal or inappropriate or. Any of the things that have been said, I would certainly hope that I would have heard that from our attorney or from staff. And I would hope that planning wouldn't have approved it. So, you know, part of it is. You know, I, I believe a big part of our rule is to be, this is a public debate over an important topic. And everyone's points are super valid. I really, I think, I think when arguing the, the merits of this proposal. I think everyone's opinions are super valid and we all, what I've heard is we all want something. But we want it to be, we understand the permanency of it. We want it to be good. We want it to appease as many people as possible. And follow our rules, but I, I have a hard time when, when planning commission approves it. Staff presents it and our attorney says nothing in, in the sense of careful, don't approve this. You'd be breaking your own rules. I feel that we can approve this as is based on what we're trying to accomplish as a community. And I don't know whether it would be approved or not, but I do want to make sure that if it is. We're not set up in a moment here where we've done something inappropriate. And so, you know, I, I. I, I, I take Councilmember Brown's comments exactly as they are, which is. An intention to apply our rules as they should be applied and, and nothing. That, nothing more than that, right? Just very good comments that, you know, we need to apply our rules. And we can't break our own rules as we make decisions. And I, I definitely appreciate that. I think that's, I mean. Couldn't be clear, right? Super, super fair. I just don't know sort of the Councilmember Lay's comments. I don't know if. I, I don't believe that voting for it does that, right? It's, so I think that's where the, the variation of opinion comes from is that. We definitely should not do something illegal tonight. I agree on that. I mean, and I don't think we would be if we approve this. And I think that the application is reasonable, the project is reasonable, it brings great value to our community above what is there. It is not perfect and it is also not final. This is a GDP. This is the start. This is like. Being in the batter's box and warming up. This is not the building. This is not the coffee shop. This is, shall we build something here that has these general principles? And I think the general principles are, are decent. And I think that as a council, if we continue to delay and deny. We continue to get what we have, which is a dirt pile. And, and I don't think we should bend to get just anything. It is not what I'm voting for. I do think we need to figure out a way in which we can move forward, and I've heard that from a lot of people. And that may not happen tonight, and that's okay. I'm totally okay with that. Councilmembers, I appreciate your differing opinions. We may not get there tonight, and that's okay. But I do think we need to figure out a way to communicate to the applicant, to our staff, to planning commission, to our residents. How do we move forward here in a way that is actually fiscally possible? And if it's not fiscally possible, we're going to continue to have a dirt pile for another ten years.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Not seeing any other comments, so I'll just add my final comments. I really appreciate the discussion from everybody. I really. Thanks staff for putting the information together. Councilmember Dickinson, I, I. I appreciate how you try to frame it around legal, illegal. I didn't use the words legal and illegal. I, I think these are matters of judgment. And so like when I look at the small area plan for this area, it says primarily along the corridor, there'll be one story buildings. That's not what we've been presented with tonight. It talks about few sheds. It talks about retail, developing a certain amount of revenue for the city. It talks about all these different things that, that aren't met. And so what I'm looking at as a judge is saying, did it meet the things in these plans that we're supposed to weigh it against, and it doesn't. And so that's all I'm coming in. I'm not trying to say anyone's doing something legal or illegal. I don't think you're going to hear the staff ever say. That what we do is illegal because it would set us up for a bad legal case if we did have to go to court over one of these things. So I don't think even if we were doing something that was boneheaded, they would ever say in the hearing, what you're doing is illegal, just, just to be fair. But I, I just can't find that it meets the, the standards that we've laid out in the plan that we have. And so that's all I'm judging it against. And I tried to articulate in that way, I made the motion, the number of those different issues. To, to try to make that clear so staff could bring back a resolution of denial around those different things with transportation and height and. Density and uses. So that's where I'm coming from. And I think it's, I think it's been a good conversation and I, I, I don't know how it's going to turn out. I look forward to seeing how it comes out. Any other comments from folks tonight? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing and I'll ask our city clerk. So just to, so everyone's clear, we're first voting on the substitute motion. To give staff direction to bring back resolution of denial with the comments that were laid out in the motion. City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call on the substitute motion?
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Maloney?
No.
Councilmember Lay?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
No.
Councilmember Dickinson?
No.
Thank you, everyone. So we'll go back to the primary motion, and the motion is to approve. Ordinance number eighteen fifteen, series twenty twenty-one, with an amendment that the concurrency requirement will be amended. So that ten thousand square feet and ten thousand square feet replace the seven thousand five hundred square feet and seven thousand five hundred square feet. In the note on the plan. Any other discussion on the motion? City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call on the motion?
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Mayor Stolzmann?
No.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
No.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Maloney?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries, and that takes us to our city attorney's report.
Uh, you, sorry, may I interrupt? There's also the resolution that needs.
Oh, I'm sorry. And so council, would someone want to make a motion on resolution twelve? Series twenty twenty-two. Regarding the age requirement.
I'm trying to bring it up, Mayor, I apologize.
I move we approve resolution number twelve, series twenty twenty-two, a resolution decreasing the number of age restricted units from twenty-four to twelve. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing no discussion, City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call on the motion?
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
No.
Mayor Stolzmann?
No.
Councilmember Fahy?
No.
Mayor Protam Maloney?
No.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And so I. I, I guess I need to ask the city attorney at that point. I, I, I guess I wasn't anticipating in my brain that possible outcome. City Attorney Kelly, do we need to take any further action on this agenda item this evening?
Um, City Clerk Muth, can you read back the vote? I'm sorry, I wasn't keeping track of the.
So the, so the ordinance passed and the resolution did not.
Then I, if city council would give staff some direction on how to maybe make further amendments. To the subdivision agreement to bring that back at a future meeting, that would be helpful.
Can I ask clarifying questions just to see if they actually need to bring? We would need to bring resolutions for finding for denial, got it? Right? Or I guess if there's any other options, council wanted to discuss substitute.
Sorry, Planner Richie, I didn't understand what you were saying. Will you just recap what you're looking for?
No, I'm sorry. Just was thinking out loud and, and got back to where the city attorney recommendation was.
Oh, sure. Because the, the ordinance was adopted. But the amendment to the subdivision agreement was not. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so then it would be helpful for staff to understand what. Some, to have some direction from city council of what further amendments to the subdivision agreement. Or what revisions to the amendments that were proposed should be made so that that can be brought back to the city council.
So I have a clarifying question for you, City Attorney Kelly. Is it, is it possible council could say that we're not interested in additional amendments? That leaving the subdivision agreement as it is, is the direction of the council? Is that a possible?
Oh, sure. I mean, my question then to Planner Richie would be, does the GDP amendment. Require the amendments to the subdivision agreement or they were just requested?
They were requested by the applicant. They're not a requirement and they're not a requirement within the GDP. And that's why it came forth as a separate. Resolution. So the subdivision agreement could stay in place as is, keeping that agreement in place. And then a new subdivision agreement will be required with the plat and PUD at such time it comes forth then. So city council could, you know, kind of take this up further. When the development comes back, or again, if you really would rather get findings on the record, we could bring back a resolution of. Denial for changing it, but I don't believe we need to.
Right. I agree that, that we don't need to. I'm sorry, Mayor, I just wasn't very familiar with what the subdivision agreement amendment. Was, was doing. I didn't work on that with the planning department. So it sounds like there's no further action required. So it sounds like there's no further action required for that agenda item. It just failed.
Thank you, everyone. And so as long as folks feel okay, understanding that we, we can move ahead, just having that resolution fail, then we will let it stand. All right. Thank you, everyone. And so that takes us to our city attorney's report.
And Mayor, I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to our council comments, committee reports and identification of future agenda items. I have a report, two reports. I went down and testified on House Bill eleven eleven and it got out of committee. Not unanimously, but with some bipartisan support, which was fantastic. And that is the bill that addresses itemization of contents and insurance. Now, this is all, you know, future law, so it doesn't directly help our residents, but it improves the, the landscape of insurance for sure. And it requires additional time that people have in rental payments. It requires some additional upfront funding to people. So it's great that that got out of committee and is moving along. The other item that's in our legislative agenda, you guys will remember it back in December when we approved it, that there were things around bicycling and safety stop. The safety stop is the yield, bicyclist yield at stop signs and stop at stoplights so that they're not in that danger zone for as long, like has been done in Idaho and shown to reduce fatalities and crashes with bicycles. And that passed out of committee with some bipartisan support also today. So that was exciting. And Dr. and Denver Regional Council of Governments also supported it. So that was exciting. So those are the updates there. At, at Dr. Cog, we have some additional changes that we're making to the transportation improvement program. But they're not so radical that I think people will be concerned. There's some bucket shifting and mobility. There's a recognition of the need to identify housing with transit. So that when you're looking at land use planning, you're not just planning a transportation system over here and planning a housing system over here, but you're thinking about how housing and transit go together. So that's being addressed. And of course, the greenhouse gas rule is being woven into the plan. Any other committee reports or identification of future agenda items? Councilmember Dickinson?
Uh, just that, uh, the EVC is meeting this Friday at one thirty. It's been, it's been a, a busy couple of months with our, our city, but we're excited about the EVC meeting and a, a conversation on the business forum that we're hoping to have soon. So anyone who wants to tune in, this Friday at one thirty.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The finance committee will be meeting on Monday at four o'clock. In January, we started a discussion about the impacts to revenue and expenditures for the city regarding the Marshall Fire. We will be continuing that discussion. So please, you know, tune in if you're interested in that discussion. So I think that'll be on our agenda probably every month, but we're in the early stages, just trying to understand things. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, wanted to say we had a meeting of the LRC last week, approved the facade, the joint agreement on the facade program. So that's going to be really exciting and we'll see how that goes. I think also there's, you know, continued interest in wanting to get together with the council to try to figure out kind of where we can, we can go from here that will be useful, especially given that the fire has occurred. There are some, certainly, we're trying to figure out already kind of what direction we're going to go. One of the other things that's sort of interesting is that we're going to have a kind of visioning process that is going to be facilitated. And that I think will help us think a little bit about how we expend resources there. Wanted to encourage those who are, haven't heard that the cities or the county has put up a page regarding air quality. And I know there are people in the community that want to know about that. And we have been pushing for that. If you've, any, some of the people have been watching our meetings in the morning, our special meetings, but you can go and find some additional information and hopefully that will be useful. The other thing is just a general request that if, and this is really a request to the public, if they have groups, I, I heard a mention of a long-term recovery group. I don't know what that group is. If they could sort of touch base with our city manager, it'd be great. There actually is a larger long-term recovery group that is comprised of a whole umbrella of governmental and non-governmental organizations that he knows about. And I think the more information can be centralized and shared, the better. The final thing is I just want to raise the question again about having somebody from the Attorney General's Consumer Protection Unit come and talk to us. Because we're seeing, at least as far as I can tell, not just the price gouging, which I think people are really suffering from right now. But we're also seeing things like people stealing the identity of folks who've lost their homes and which is just despicable. But there are some, you know, for, to lose your home and then to have that happen is just, it's just ridiculous. But it might be very helpful for our community to hear what the avenues are. Perhaps the differences between what you should go to the Louisville Police Department for, what you should file with consumer protection. And there, there's help there and we want to be really helpful to our, our folks. And then there's also a lot of pretty unscrupulous vendors who are going around and trying to sell different things to people who are already really hurting and vulnerable. And so all of these things, we just need to be mindful of. But it, I think we've talked about it. I just want to keep the heat on because there's good people who can come and help us and walk us through and educate us, educate the public.
Councilmember Lay, do you want to coordinate with the Attorney General's office to have them come to a future meeting? Would you like me to?
I can now, that, that would probably be pretty easy for me to.
I was thinking the same thing.
And I can, I'll, I'll work with the city manager too, because I know he's, he's supportive of that because he's said so in the past. We'll, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it done.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lay. That sounds great.
All right.
Any other future agenda topics from folks? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned. See you next time.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.